Okay, counsel. Cassie has informed me that we are now broadcasting and that we are recording our meeting. This is the Syracuse City Council Regular Business Meeting of November 10th, 2020. We were convening at 6:02. This also streamed on the Syracuse City YouTube channel, which is announced on the agenda. We are also inviting those to join by Zoom who would care to join by Zoom. This is a public meeting held electronically in accordance with House Bill 5002 of the Open and Public Meetings Act amendments, signed into law on John 25th of 2020 pursuant to the written determination of the chair, finding that conducting the meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present due to infections and potentially dangerous nature of COVID-19. Now, we're going to also discuss some changes that have made by the governor later in the evening. We have added, there's an amended, a couple of amendments to the agenda that was posted on Thursday that were posted yesterday, having to do with public comment on a, on an issue that was passed in a business meeting in October, and then one regarding enforcement of new COVID directions by the governor. And so we'll proceed with that amended agenda. I now call the meeting to order, and I've asked Seth if he would offer an invocation on our meeting, and then if Jordan would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this opportunity we have to come and meet together as counsel and staff and citizens who are interested and invested in this community. Heavenly Father, we ask thee to guide us and inspire us to make good decisions for now and for the future, and help us to keep in mind the needs of all those who lie within the boundaries of our city. We're mindful of all that's going on in the world right now, and we ask thee to bless us with patience and consideration for those of us who are in need at this time, or struggling with illness, or who are struggling with political upheaval. We ask thee to bless us with kindness and humility, and a willingness to move forward and work together. And Heavenly Father, we are grateful again for this opportunity, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
All right, if I could request, everyone, please make the proper hand salute, and I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate your willingness to do so. Counsel, I would entertain a motion that we adopt the amended agenda.
I'm moved.
I heard Corinne first. Who else did I need to hear?
I'll second.
Okay, that was Jordan. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that will stand unanimous. Okay, and now, item two is public comment, and I would like to inform those that are here present. Cassie says we have no email comment to, from the general public. I would like to limit this first public comment to the discussions that are from people joining us using Zoom that are not here to address the Tucon property possibility of reconsideration. So anybody who would like to be able to comment here, we now open this to public comment. I'd ask you to limit yourself to three minutes, if you'll state your name and place of residence. We would like to have you join us, and it will become part of the public record. Cassie, can you help me watch? If you'll go to the Participants button and select that, you have the option there to raise your hand.
Talk first?
No.
Amy Epps is raising her hand. You might want to ask if she's talking about the Tucon or the...
Amy, are you talking about the Tucon project?
I am. Is it too soon to talk about that?
Yes, ma'am. Can we just put that off until, yeah, we have an agenda item for that?
Okay, sorry.
But just for that.
I had my audio. I couldn't hear on the audio, so I didn't hear the first part. So, thank you.
We'll come back. Thank you.
Okay.
And seeing and seeing none, and hearing from no one, I will now close public comment. Now, we have also agreed this evening to take exceptional public comment regarding ordinance 2020-24 adopted on August 27th of 2020, amending the zoning from R1 residential to R3 residential for the property located at 2889 South 3000 West. Now, we have received one written comment there from Mrs. Bonnie Burgess. We've been in contact with her. She would like to address the council live, but we will place her written comment in as part of the public record. So, any, any that would like to comment to that decision that was made on October 27th of 2020, we'll now open that. If you will state again your, your name and your place of residence, and if you'll go to the participants thing and raise your hand so we can see among us who is there. And Cassie, can you help me? Okay, I see Susan.
Yes.
Okay, that's, we recognize you, Susan.
Okay.
Would you like to comment?
Yes, I would, thank you. I live right next door to the project that's going in, and I'm quite concerned about, you know, the number of houses that are going in next to me. I'm, I'm concerned about the animals that I have on my property, and in the fall when we butcher the cattle, that, that could present a problem with the surrounding houses that are going in. So that concerns me a bit. I hope that we have some protection laws that would protect me and my neighbors that are actually in that zone. I'm not sure why the zone was put in over us, but what I would like, if going, you know, going forth, if the actual project is going to go through, I would like to either have the road next to me, or I would like to have a stub going into my property so that it wouldn't just cut me off for future purposes, so that after I'm no longer living there and my family wants to do something different than they are able to, I just don't want to be cut off from not being able to do anything. And so that, that's my biggest concern, is the animals that run on my property, how close the house is going to be next to me as far as the backyards, things of that nature, because the smells and things that does rise and concern make problems. So that's really all I have. Did you need my address?
Yeah, and your name. I know you, but...
Oh, yes. Okay, it's Susan Booth, and I'm at 2853 South 3000 West.
Okay.
That's probably right next door to Mr. Russell.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
Yep, we'll, let us hear comment, and then we'll have someone from the staff address those issues that you bring up.
Okay.
Hey, anyone else that would like to address the council?
Yes, I'd like to. I'm on the same line.
I'm sorry.
This is Keith Burgess. I'm on the same, yeah, I'll be raising my hand again.
Okay, all right.
Okay, yes, Mayor, Councilman, thank you for your consideration. This week, I met some of the neighbors from one of the most recent developments. They're great people, so thank you for those. Also, a few weeks ago, I went over to help my neighbor clean out this crowd with the tractor, my tractor. As you might guess, there were flies, there was dust, there was smell, there was cow manure. Cow manure contains E. coli and salmonella bacteria known as a human health risk. We spread it over the pasture to decompose. Now, two weeks ago, I watched as four of you council members voted to allow Tucon development to potentially place homes within 30 to 40 foot of this corral. I don't think that planning commission can fix this with a stamp on the print or the change in the city ordinance. It is my understanding that's why you have legislative authority to protect the safety and welfare of the residents and resolve this kind of problem, not create such. Before this becomes a bigger problem, please reconsider your vote. You have the authority to guide this solution to one that works for everyone. Secondly, a year ago, I took upon myself to visit my unincorporated neighbors and talk to them about the benefits of annexing to the city together. I went to visit Royce and Noah and received some great information on how to do that. I visited most of landlords and residents and thought it was well received, maybe too well. One of the landowners raised his property value price to another million dollars. Since that time, I quit looking for investors. But now, since that, during the last year, the Syracuse City has rolled out a new general plan that calls our three, four acres or more low density. This is poison to an agricultural neighborhood. Also, the new general plan has this A1, R1, has over the top of our A1, R1 neighborhood, a medium density overlay that does not match anything in our street. We did not ask to be redeveloped again. Therefore, the request for R3 zoning does not meet the approval standards. I can see from current engineering drawings, the city planning department has been setting the stage for this R3 spot zoning for a period of time. It's already on the prints. You can see from, from this kind of maneuver, and it puts me in a rough situation. Depending on your decision tonight, do I have to go back to my neighbors and apologize and say that I was wrong in trying to get them into the city at this time? So please consider this. You, you are given the authority to take care of that. Also, I know you're, you're passionate about developing the city, but don't let that subtract from your real responsibilities to take care of the health, welfare, and the property rights of the people. This will get in the road and lose you the trust necessary to govern. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Keith. Anyone else? Amy?
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. My name's Amy Epps, and I'm at 2933 South 3000 West in Syracuse. And my husband and I are asking for you not to approve the minutes from the business meeting on October 27th of 2020. During the city council meeting on October 13th, Mr. Russell specifically asked when the table item would be up for vote, and Mayor Gailey responded, the earliest would be November 10th. And on October 27th, it was voted on at a business meeting for discussion, and I feel like there was some deceitfulness as far as that meeting went, because Mr. Russell was notified, but us adjoining neighbors were not. So we're hoping that you will let us have some speak, you know, future voice in that before it's actually voted on. Let's see, because us neighbors are personally affected by the zoning change, and I know there are some ordinance changes in the talk to protect our rights, but the people moving in would also be affected. We have a cow trough that is probably only approximately 10 feet from the property line, and where that trough is, there's a lot of cow manure and a lot of flies. And we also have a chicken and turkey coop right on the property line, well, you know, right along the property line, and turkeys can also be very smelly. So those, those ordinances could infringe on the new owners. We fought to get a buffer around our properties with the shoreline development to maintain like properties around us, but with Mr. Russell's property, that has not been taken into consideration. To continue to have like properties around us, we would like similar properties to the buffer for the shoreline on his property. We know that development is necessary, and we're okay with neighbors. We just feel like it should be zoned with the purpose of content with the surrounding zoning and uses. Also, we feel like Susan Booth does, that if that does go through, that we would like a stub of a road also towards our property for, for use of the back of our pasture if we need to be able to get to it. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate you, everything you guys do.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else?
That's me.
Okay.
Stan Epps. My address is 2933 South 3000 West, Syracuse, Utah. Doing a little bit of reading, different things, and it's come across something that was kind of interesting from the Syracuse City approval standards. Interesting. We should be taking into consideration, first one is about harmonic. Yeah. Can't say the word, but anyway, it's got to be compatible with the existing properties that were, that are down here. This doesn't do it. Never has, never will. That's why we fought the shoreline division, and we were able to get it into having a buffer zone around all of the homes that were going to be affected by this. CW lands come back and said, yeah, you know, you're right. The city come back and said, yeah, you're right, we need this. Common sense factor. You know, there's, if you just read just the, their approval standards, and what the four main ingredients are of what the city council should take in consideration for, I don't believe that any one of them has really been met. The adverse effect on our property value and everything else going forward will decline. That's not fair. That's taking my property rights away from me. It is nothing but a big, you know, putting that many homes down into a rural area, a farmland area, everybody down here's got one to five acres of land, and now we're going to put quarter acre lots up alongside me with the road going through it. There is no harmony in that decision. I'm going to have one fight after another, and all I'm saying, at least delay this project going forward until all the other problems, zoning rules, zoning laws, and everything else that's the city council has to, there, we've been told in the future, maybe, possibly next week, next year, whenever, all of those things need to be in place before that project goes forward. That's only fair to anybody that lives down here. You're gonna, it's not just affecting me, Susan Booth, but everybody on 3000, this project is going to affect the property across the street from us. They're in half acre lots, enough room to where it does provide a buffer for the people that is adjacent to them to have the livestock and stuff. This does not. There is no harmony, and there will be no harmony in this. They're going to be complaining, we're going to get called on it, your police are going to be called out here. I'm just asking you to please reconsider. Put this stuff into place to protect my rights as a property owner, then let's have a public decision. And I'd also like to see if we can't put this, for the whole city, a nice referendum. Does Syracuse City want to become Southern California with high density housing going in everywhere with no future planning? We're just going to put in five level apartment complexes, multiple housing. That's what I'm, you know, there's the two things. postpone it so we can get all of the property rights protected, delay it, whatever. And the main one is, I think we do need a referendum to see if the people of Syracuse really wants this kind of high density homes everywhere. Like I said, it doesn't just affect me, it affects the town. Your legacy is going to be 10 years from now, and you're not the city council, and you look back and you see all this high density home, that's going to be your legacy. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Epps. Bonnie, did I see your hand go up?
Yeah, the, raised the hand on the participant isn't working today. My only option is to rename myself, so sorry to have to not follow your rules. But you guys have hopefully received my letter, and hopefully you've taken time to actually read it. I am disappointed in your choice to do the hurry it up vote on the Tucon project to rush it through. That actually breaks several rules and trying to rush something through when it doesn't meet certain conditions of a necessity. This, there was no reason to rush that vote through, and we were told that it wouldn't happen until tonight, and there was not public input on that. We did not have an opportunity to discuss. And then also by pushing it through, it was in a meeting that was scheduled or slated, that meeting is supposed to be a business meeting, not a voting meeting, and it was listed on the agenda, but not for a vote. And as Ms. Epps, Mrs. Epps pointed out, that we were not notified, but Mr. Russell was, and so that's, that's just all kinds of ethic things that just really bothered me that it was not given fair opportunity. And then because of that vote, and we were not aware of it happening, and you're saying that as citizens, we should be aware of all the votes that go on in the city? Well, that, that robbed us of our opportunity to file a referendum within the seven days, because I was under the impression that it would be brought back to the council meeting for a vote, and then I received note that it wasn't actually being for a vote today, that it's to decide whether you're going to approve the minutes or not. So I'm asking you, please do not approve those minutes, and listen to the input that's been given to you and revote. The zoning overlay that was put on us was for CW lands with their, the PRD development that they were putting in, and we fought CW lands, and we worked with them diligently, and we came to an agreement that benefited both sides, where they made everything around at R1, Mr. Russell's property was supposed to be in that at the time when the agreement was made, and so that was supposed to be in R1 and left a R1's zoning. And CW lands has held up their bargain, and for some reason, now you guys are not holding up that bargain. I met with you, Mayor, I met with Noah, I've been in to meet with you several times, I've talked to Dave, and I want to thank Dave for actually having the, the integrity to not approve this last meeting, because it had not followed proper procedure, and he was listening to the citizens and voting no on this. But we met with you guys many times, and you all agreed that, yes, there needs to be a buffer on this, and that somehow now you're taking that buffer away from us. We went on your word. This was never put in writing, but it was given to us that you guys would honor that buffer, and now you're not. And I'm very, very disappointed in the change in four to one vote. Jordan, I met with you several times, and you agreed that, yes, there needs to be a buffer there. Why are you not leaving that buffer? And so we've done tons of research. My brother-in-law, Keith Burgess, has given you all kinds of ordinances that this is violating. One of the big ones with this new proposal that you're making, it hasn't even gone to the planning commission, hasn't been heard by public comment, and that it would shorten the distance between the fence, the borderline of the farm to where buildings can be put and houses. That shortage, shortage, it actually is a favor of me as a landowner, and I thank you for doing that as a landowner, but it's actually bad for you as a city, because if there's any liability and you're putting people at risk with help, that falls back on you. So if something happens where I get sued, I say, well, it's the ordinance. Blame the ordinance, blame the city. And so with shortening that distance now, you have put liability on the city for the health, because that is your responsibility to protect the health and welfare of the citizens. And do the research, Keith is listening to you, but do the research. If you shorten that distance and allow that property line to be where it's at, you will find that you are liable for, for that health. And that is a risk that, as a landowner, I don't want, and as a city, you should not want. And again, how can you approve something that hasn't even gone through the city council or through the planning commission for this zoning ordinance change? How can you vote on something that's not even written down on paper, and it hasn't passed for citizens? And so I put a quote in here, and I do want to, to read this quote. It says, "What a country chooses to save is..." Sorry, because my farm is so important to me. So what a country chooses to save is what a country chooses to say about itself. What are you saying about city? Are you saying you don't want to save the farms, and it's not important to you? And I gave you some pictures of my family on our, on our farm, and please cherish those rights, because they are so important to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Anyone else? Okay, Brett?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. As a teacher, one of the things that we've been discussing recently is, sorry, we've been discussing recently is a couple of things. One is, what is the difference between a growth mindset and a fixed mindset? When we teach our students to have a growth mindset, because that means if they make mistakes, they're willing to try again, again, pick themselves up and not feel defeated, but keep trying. A fixed mindset is one in which we make a decision, and if that decision doesn't happen, we get all bent out of shape and we give up. But what I fear is that the city has a fixed mindset about growth, and so it would kind of combine the two and turn them into something that's not good. So what, when we get off of this fixed mindset, that we have to be the city council and the mayor to plan out the rest of this city, I think that things will go a lot better, because what we're doing is we're running over people. We're running over elderly people who, who put housing up by Smiths so that they could have a comfortable place to live, a quiet place to live, and then walk to the market. And then now we build huge apartment complexes next to them, we're planning on it, not to mention an alcohol store. And now, down here in the farms, we're starting to attack this end. And so, so when are we going to stop having a fixed mindset about growth and really look at what's the best thing for Syracuse City in the long run? I don't think that we're looking at that. We're just thinking, oh, we have a lot of people moving in, we got to make room, and out of the old, in with the new, kind of a thing. I think we need to sit down and really talk about it, rather than just steamroll everybody and have to let them pick up the pieces when you're done. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Are there others? Cassie, do you see anything in the hand side?
No, I don't see any other raised hands, Samir.
Okay, I, I'm going to now close public input regarding this, and what I'd like to do is ask Noah if you would give the perspective from the, from the planning department. And then Paul, could you maybe address maybe legal ramifications and where the city sits?
Hey, Mayor, really quick, I don't know if this is the time to do this, but I've been, it's been made, I've been made aware that we have the wrong minutes, the wrong description of the property, of this property, from the minutes that were on October 27th. So it looks like the text was copied and pasted from another R3 project, so we probably need to amend that. Is that, is this the time to do that?
Look, we will, when we get to the approval of the minutes, we'll talk about what you'd like to do with the minutes.
Okay.
What, what I would like to have happen is the staff respond to what they've heard. Noah, could you maybe respond on behalf of the planning department and, and then Paul about where we sit both sides legally?
Yeah, sure, I'd be happy to. First of all, just like to say that we take growth management and all of these applications very seriously. There's a lot of thought. We want to make sure everything's done in the right way, in a transparent way. One thing I want to say, so they talked about planning commission, not going to planning commission. I did go to a public hearing on October 6th, where planning commission did hear all of these same arguments, and then they, they did regardless forward a recommendation for approval. Then it came to city council on October 13th, where it was tabled. If you remember, there was still some outstanding questions, and so it was tabled until October 27th. And if, if the city council wanted to reconsider their decision that they made on October 27th, then they just have to do that before they approve any of these minutes. I'd be happy to answer any, I mean, there was a lot of, you know, a lot of specifics as far as the properties and how they'd be impacted. I'd be happy to answer any, I mean, there was a lot of, you know, a lot of specifics as far as the properties and how they'd be impacted. Basically, the current zoning is R1 and he could do that administratively right now and do six lots. So R1 is 12,000 square foot lots. He's requesting to move to 10,000 square foot lots. So he'd be reducing the lot size and adding two more lots. So you'd have eight lots. But the, you know, the things that they brought up are valid concerns and valid things that cities should consider. When considering a zoning amendment, the context and the effects to the surrounding neighbors. Animals and setbacks and things like that. The shoreline development, they did agree to 12,000 square foot lots. But that wasn't a zoning, they kept saying zoning overlay. That wasn't something that the city did. That was just something that the developer agreed to. But they do have 12,000 square foot lots on the western edge. These would be 10,000 square foot lots. And so it's up to you to decide whether or not that would be appropriate or not. As far as the stub road to the north and south, planning commission. Well, first of all, this is zoning, so we don't have, this isn't a subdivision. So that would, you know, a specific lot layout would be approved with, with the subdivision application. But as far as, you know, they did, they did talk about this briefly in planning commission. And, you know, they didn't necessarily feel that a stub road was, you know, it's essentially an exaction. From the property owner. It should be proportionate to the size of the property on each side. But that'll be something that, that they'll, they'll need some more discussion with the subdivision process. Yeah, I'm probably rambling a little bit. I apologize, but I'm, I want to make sure I cover everything. Maybe, maybe if council has questions, I can answer specific questions that were brought up. But, but you know, I just want to reiterate that as far as, as far as noticing, we did noticing. As far as staff analysis, we provided staff analysis. As far as the text amendment to kind of a, kind of alleviate some of those animal rights concerns. We're working on that. It's done with planning commission. It'll come to you. So that's making it through the process. Really the big difference here is, is, you know, two more lots on the property. Noah, so in regards to Mrs. Epps' comments. She had mentioned just the placement of the road and potentially how this might cut off access to her property. Can you speak to that a little bit and why, I mean, from what I gathered, it almost sounded like she was saying she would have preferred. This to, to not impede future development if there was the, the appetite for that from her family in the future. Can you speak to that a little bit? Yeah, Cassie, can I share my screen? Hey, let me just.
Yeah, you have it.
Okay. So this is the property. And let's see if I can figure this, this drawing stuff out. So there's, there's really not a lot of options when it comes to this property, right? And so you have, I get a mix up, booths or apps on one, on each side. So they're talking about they want a stub road like that. And I guess a stub road like that. One thing to consider is that you'd have to have some sort of fire turnaround to service the lot. So you need, one of the requirements of developments, they have frontage on a road. So each zone is different, but hundred feet wide lot. So right of ways are 60 feet, so.
Okay, just a question.
You have to be some sort of cul-de-sac and then, anyway, we, we don't need to get into all of the specifics of how it could develop. But that'll be, once this gets through zoning, the subdivision process would vet out whether, whether or not the stub road would be required.
Noah?
Yeah?
And I, I don't believe that because there hasn't been prior access to the rear of either of these properties. There's no requirement by law to have to allow that for either of the properties, correct? Because they should have access from their own property to the rears.
Correct. They, they do have access currently, but if they want to develop, there's, there's enough acreage in their property to be able to develop into future lots. But what, if, if they don't have access from another road, they'd have to rely on the access on 3,000. And you'd have to have the proper lot width and without really analyzing their property. You'd have to, maybe they could split it this way. But.
Flag property?
You, so that's the other thing in our ordinance. Fire that the lot width on frontage to a road be met. And so if you, some, some cities allow what you call a flag lot where you can just subdivide it. And that's, that's what a lot of cities do when they're doing a lot of infill kind of development. And the, and it really, it's not ideal because you end up with a house behind a house. And it usually makes sense if they're related or something. But you know, for fire response and mail delivery, you kind of end up with this thing behind another thing. And then they're separate lots, so they can be sold separately. And it's just not an ideal development pattern. But a lot of cities that are kind of reaching build out, they start doing that to allow property owners to fill in the gaps. But I, so far our city just hasn't been there as far as appetite to allow that.
Okay, so I want to clarify that we notified all of this legally in the previous meetings. Because Mr. Epps said that it had not been, that.
Yeah, in fact, in fact, we redid the public hearing because the first public hearing was, said 2,000 west. And so we redid it to say 3,000 west.
And then are all of the zoning laws in place for being able to consider this item?
Yeah, the, like Mr. Epps referenced, the, the ordinance here, I'll pull this up here. This, this is what our approval measure, approval standards are by ordinance. And they're not, this is a legislative decision. They're not hard and fast. Whether it would be harmonious with the overall character of existing development within the, the development in the vicinity of the subject property. Whether it be consistent with the standards of any applicable overlay zone. There's not an overlay zone in this case. To the extent in which it may adversely affect adjacent property. You know, and so that's what we were saying that it's important to consider that. Whether or not two more lots were over what's already there might. You know, as far as the argument that this should just stay five acres, I guess. You know, the zoning's already, he already has R1. He already has that development right. So that's not even really on the table. The adequacy of facilities and services intended to serve the subject property. Roadways, you know, fire protection, all that stuff. Those are the approval standards and I believe that those have been properly vetted out with planning commission and city council. We've had a lot of conversation about it.
And one other thing that was brought up was about a bargain that was struck between the developer and the residents. And I just want to clarify that that bargain was not made with the city or city council at all. Is that correct? With the previous shoreline development?
Yeah, that's right. I can even, let's see. I've got all of the packets from previous years up here. I could even pull up the shoreline plat and I can show you. Might be easier just to describe it, but.
Okay. I'm just clarifying for the record that, you know, what Mrs. Burgess talked about with the bargain that was struck was not with us.
No, there is no agreement.
Of a different development, correct?
No, but this is what she's talking about. She's just saying that there's kind of the, this agreement that they made with them.
Right.
Between two private property owners.
Right.
That they're, see, these are 12,000 square foot lots.
Right.
But you know, you have nine, so it goes from six to nine, seven, seven, then I see all these 12. And then the way it's proposed, it would be back down to 10. So, you know.
These properties are with a different developer, correct?
This is a different developer. This is Keith Russell. This was CW land.
Because they were excluded from the shoreline at that time.
Yes. In fact, originally they were kind of grouped, but they didn't have the proper environmental things that are required with preliminary plat. And so that's something that will be required with preliminary plat when this property develops.
So road stubs through other people's property is not a guarantee? And then this was not part of the bargain, this land area? And everything was properly noticed? So here we are. Also, the discussion about the farm protections?
Yeah.
What?
What about it? Sorry.
Want to make sure that that's in place too? That we agreed to have that in place to protect their farms. And we were adjusting the distances to protect their farms and the structures, even if they needed to rebuild.
So I can speak to that. And you know, they, they mentioned pens and things right on the property line and, and pastures and things like that. So that, you know, I, who knows what these future residents will like or not like. But yeah, there probably is a chance that one of them doesn't like the smell or what they see or, but these guys were here first.
Right.
And so they go in full knowing. And it's, so it's what they were talking about, one of the concerns was, was not concerning existing structures. They can keep existing structures. Nobody, just because a house comes in, doesn't mean that they have to do anything with those existing structures.
Right.
The way the ordinance was worded is that if they wanted to put new farm structures, and I'm not talking garages. That's a, an accessory structure. That's a different thing. But just new pens, animal enclosure, that sort of thing. They, they would have been limited. They would have had to be a certain number of feet away from, from those homes. But with this latest amendment, they'll be able to put their structure. If they want new, if they want to keep growing their animal husbandry activities, they could put a new one. With, if it's over 200 square feet, they still have to get a building permit, conditionings permit. But that's just a whole separate issue.
Right. So like if they wanted to rebuild the barn, they now can closer to property line, correct?
Yeah, well, they could have always rebuilt, say it burns down or something. They could have always rebuilt it exactly the way it was. But if they wanted to rebuild it closer to the prop, well, so there's a difference between a barn and, you know, if it's considered a garage or barn or pen or shed, you know, there's kind of like all this fine lines. But it could, if, if we didn't consider it to be a garage and it was strictly for animal keeping or something, yeah, then with this latest ordinance, they could, they could put it, you know, the same way an accessory structure would be.
Can you remind me, one thing, I'm just looking at this. Currently, how far from a property line are they, are you supposed to have a chicken coop and things like that? Under our current ordinance?
Well, I can't remember. Let me, it's 150 and 75, maybe Paul remembers off the top of his head, but let me look it up.
If you want, it's in your, your planning commission packet. I just haven't looked at it.
Um, I think I've got it right here. Okay, so this is, this is what we're talking about right here. Structures, right? So with lots containing 21,780 square feet, so that's half acre. Farm animals may be kept, provided that all pens, barns, coops, stables and corrals and other similar enclosing structures to keep animals or fowl should not be less than 50 feet from dwellings on adjacent lots. Not less than 20 feet from a dwelling on the same lot. And not less than 100 feet from a public street. So I think is what we were worried about is actually the street, because you would have to measure.
Yeah. But nothing about a property line?
No.
Okay.
No, it's, it's from the existing dwelling, other dwellings or a street.
Okay.
And we have, is that in, yes, is that in here in this today's agenda? I know that we were going to try to make sure that was in place to protect.
That, that'll be on the November 17th agenda.
That's in the planning commission packet for this past week, but it didn't make it into this.
Right.
Yeah, they just barely finished up with that.
Perfect.
So we know that's been worked on.
Yeah.
Particularly taking these down to a quarter acre lot sizes, adding, adding a couple extras in there, right?
Yeah, yeah. And applicants here, I'm sure you can talk this very specifically. But yeah, it's 10,000 square foot lot. So it's between 12,000 and 10,000 square foot lot.
So with the, with the pending changes coming out of planning mission, with the stamp on the plat and everything else. Have we essentially alleviated any potential future changes that would have to come in place for the existing landowners? Like is there no, nothing that this would change as far as their current rights as property owners?
No, they can keep doing their animals the way they want to do it.
Including, including future?
Yeah, including, including future pens and stuff after the text amendment goes through. That was the only limit for just new structures.
Yeah, so, so what, what would happen going forward? And this would happen with any development that went in there. Is they would have to move their, any new buildings away from the property line and follow basically the accessory structure. Unless it's like a pen and then, then they have to move it farther. Is that kind of the idea?
Which they'd have to do. Existing, there are already homes that would be there.
They would, they would have to meet, we're basically changing it to be consistent with this. So this would be the new rule. Not less than 25 feet from dwellings on adjacent lot. The rear yard lot in R1 is 30, so. So they can put it right on the property line. Not less than 10 feet from the dwelling on the same lot. You know, that's just their own house and they're not next to their own house, I don't think, anyway.
But you're saying that's an R1. If this is an R3, then it's not the same.
But the R3 is the ones aren't building, that aren't building the pens.
I, I understand, but say the R, my point is, is you say that you could go right up to the lot line. Because the R1 is a 30-foot backyard back inset, but it's not in an R3. The backyard is smaller than that, so you can't go right up to the property line because now you're closer to the dwelling.
No, but if you read in the development agreement that's in the packet, there, that he's agreeing to R1 setbacks. So it will be 30 feet and we have a signed development agreement saying that he will do that.
So it's essentially R1 setbacks to protect the neighbors as well?
Yes, that's the, the, our little slogan or saying that we keep trying to explain. It's, it's R1 setbacks with.
On an R2 lot.
densities in the R3 zone.
Perfect.
Clear as mud, I know, but.
But in a way, this is like the best scenario. You know, this is satisfying what we want to keep it R1 for the backyards against these neighbors. With a smaller side yard in a, what could be a hair density zone, but it's not going to be. And that's all agreed to in the development.
Yeah, I mean, we're really trying to be, we're really trying to be as conscious as we can. And trying to balance that. I mean, when you make compromises, sometimes it, it's hard. Because, you know, not everybody ends up happy, but you know.
So I'm just going to weigh in this one point, that when I voted against this, it's because when you do something like this, let's say 10 years from now and none of us are on the council. They look back and they go and somebody says, well, it's R3. So why are we not allowing all R3 as the neighbors? And all of these provisions that were set in this agreement only are out the window. So my concern for not allowing R3 at this time is that the provisions, what you're doing is you're setting a precedent that says we've, we don't have a problem with those issues. Because nobody's going to look up and say, oh, all of this in this specific agreement was the only reason this was allowable. People will forget about that and just assume that R3, all of the conditions are now acceptable. That's my concern and I brought it forward. And I just reminding us that that's still an issue. That's my concern, and I brought it forward, and, uh, I just reminding us that, that's still an issue. Whatever you do on this property, people will assume that all of these things were acceptable on other properties.
I, I agree with all the points he's making. I, I think, I mean, really, if we want to do this correctly, we need to open up the general plan and make the amendments that we've talked about in the past, where we actually go through and allow for lower densities in these zones. So that he can actually get an R2 zone or an R1 zone with his, in a medium density. I think no one's opposed to putting lower density around the city. I've never heard anyone complain about that yet. But, you know, the day's still young.
So on November seventeenth, uh, you will see a text amendment, uh, that would, that would enable that.
Thank you, Noah.
To the general plan?
Yes. Missions already weighed in on it, and I don't think.
So we're one week away from fixing this problem so that we could actually do it correctly.
Um, I know, I think that that's oversimplification, that it's one week away because that's one week away from the planning commission. And then another two weeks for us to be able to hear it and so forth. Especially with the holidays.
Uh, Paul, counsel, do you have any questions for Paul?
Just want to make sure that we're legal, because we've been accused of not being legal.
Yeah, so the, as Noah, as Noah mentioned, we had the public hearings as required by state code, um, in, in the planning commission. That's the time when the public, um, comments are made. Additionally, you did receive comments, um, at the prior work session, at least one. Um, and it was noticed, um, in accordance with state law. So, uh, you are, you, you are fine to, um, not reconsider this and just approve it. If you want to reconsider it, that's, that's in your rules, um, and that's something that you could do. Um, I, I would say if, if you don't plan on changing your, your decision, I don't know why you'd ever vote to reconsider something. Uh, so that's, it's certainly, uh, within the council's purview to do either a reconsideration or just approve the minutes and, and not reconsider.
So.
Go, yeah.
Let me ask one last question. So that twenty-five foot boundary, is that from any dwelling structure or any structure at all? Like if, let's say that the, the property owner builds a shed in the back. Does that now mean they need to build their, their chicken coop?
Shed's not a dwelling.
All right, so those dwellings. Okay, I just want to make sure that was clear, that, that this does not apply to accessory structures. If they build a shed in the corner of their lot, they don't have to build the chicken coop twenty-five feet from that.
Well, let me just throw in one wrench there, and, and this has not happened, this is not applicable at the moment. But we talk a lot about being our, uh, dwellings could turn into, um, accessory dwellings. If someone were to build a garage in the back and turn it into an apartment, now it becomes a dwelling. So I'm just throwing that, that out there for consideration. That, uh, anytime we start allowing these accessory dwellings, now it is subject to the same law.
Yeah, I could see somebody could argue that. And when we, when this comes before you, that might be something that we keep in mind. Maybe we say principal, principal dwellings or something like that. Because if somebody did build an accessory dwelling right closer to the property line, then one could argue that that would be.
Okay, counsel, I'm going to end discussion on this, if you're okay with that. And I'd like to move us on to item four, let's, approval of the minutes. Now Lisa, you mentioned an exception in one of the minutes. Do you want to go there?
Um, the, I guess there was a copy and paste issue for the description, page fifty-seven. Uh, five, basically on this property, the, um, description of the property is from a different, different property. So let me.
Are you talking about A, B, or C?
Hold on, let me see.
Needs to be amended, not, yeah.
Needs to be amended. Uh, the occur, it's the, it's the correct agenda title and motion language, but the project description is wrong. Page fifty-seven of the packet, item five.
Okay, fifty-seven.
Which, which meeting is that in? Which minute?
October twenty-seventh.
October twenty-seventh.
Mm-hmm.
There we go. So we just need to amend the address or description.
Description, mm-hmm. I have too many computers and this one does not scroll and give me a number, so I can't.
The, is the correct one on page forty? It looks like in the special meeting packet versus the work session.
Hang on.
Yeah, so it looks like the incorrect language is in the special meeting minutes. So mayor, that's item C in the minutes.
Okay.
Approval. So they would be amending the minutes for the special meeting, just to include the proper staff description of that application.
Okay. Counsel, I'm going to open the discussion before we approve the meetings, means, um, whether you want to reconsider the, the decision that was made on October twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty regarding the property. I would just say for the record, I can't because I voted against it, so I'm, I'm not capable of that. The other four?
We're going, willing to reconsider it?
If you're willing to reconsider it.
I, I actually like Dave's point that, um, I kind of think we ought to try and do this correctly. Um, it seems like in our, at a minimum, R2 would be more applicable to the scenario, simply because that's what we're building here.
Right.
And so if the future zoning would be based off the adjacent neighbors, I guess that's redundant. The adjacent lots, then I think it would be best to do this correctly and just do an R2 zone when we make this text amendment. So I'd be willing to reconsider it.
Lisa.
The ordinance.
What's the comment on that? What would the, what, what's the cost of the reconsideration? Because if it ends up being that we're giving it the same amount of lot size, which is what R2 is, um, and we're protecting those neighbors around it, what's the cost in general to the developer and to the city? What, what is the timeline?
And the cost too, the literal cost, does he have to reapply and so forth?
Noah, can you, can you address that, Noah?
So, um, the application right from me, I think it's about six hundred dollars to apply for general plan and six hundred dollars for a rezone. Um, and so if, yeah, it's, it's a couple months.
But those can be amended. We've done that in the past when we've asked somebody to reconsider their, uh, their application and either amend the application, or you can waive the fee to do a replacement application. We have done that as counsel, so that they didn't have to pay the cost twice.
But he would still have to apply to change the general plan, and that would be six hundred dollars no matter what.
And the last.
You can waive the fee if you want. It could be a council-initiated general plan change.
Yeah, so it sounds like we're already, sorry, go ahead. You're going to say the same thing.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, you guys, uh, are the owners of your zoning map. So, yeah, it could be a self-initiated.
Okay, and this is part, or next to R3, correct?
No, it's next to PRD.
Next to PRD, so.
RPC.
RPC.
Can we see a general zoning map really quickly, Noah? Would that be possible?
And then while you're bringing that up, can you just, i- is the text amendment to the general plan going to allow for lower densities in these areas?
So is what it will do, let me show you the.
I know this really isn't on this agenda.
And this is the general plan, correct? Yes, okay, good.
So this is the general plan. The way the ordinance says right now, that the zoning has to match the general plan. So obviously two separate maps.
Okay.
But, and the, obviously, the gen, the general plan map is meant to be a guiding document. But when you have language in the, in the ordinance that says that the zoning has to match it exactly, it makes it less of a guiding document and more of like the Bible, you know?
Okay, so right next to it though, is, is a yellow zone, which is considered low density, which also includes R3 in it already, correct?
Yeah, so the.
Obvious from the view.
Yeah, the issue is, so to see the orange color with my mouse.
Right. I, I'm not, I guess what I'm, I'm hearing though is this argument that, well, if we make this little portion, if we change that back to yellow, then it'll prevent the rest of them from being zoned R3, which, but R3 is part of the yellow zone. So I think this is meant.
I, I think the reason why they want to, to just do R2 is just because it's more straightforward. It's the same end result, but in order to do that, they'd have to.
But based on the argument too, though, that surrounding properties will then be pressured to have lower densities is, is really kind of interesting because the yellow next to it in all of these properties surrounding it include R3.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't understand changing this one five acre part to R3 when all the rest of it to the west is R3 already. It's kind of, doesn't make sense.
It may allow for it to be R3, but it's asking counsel to be, use their discretion to understand what is around it.
Right, but it, but it, the thing is, is it doesn't change any of it.
And that, I think the, I agree that the end result is the same.
So we're just jumping through hoops to look good.
I don't, no, I wouldn't go that far, but I, I, I do think that as we're going through this, um, we're, we're trying to zone, I, I just love how we have to say, we're, we're zoning an, an R2 and an R3 with R1 setbacks.
Right, because he's, this developer understands the needs of the neighbors and he's making it work with the neighbors.
Yeah, so I am not opposed to what he's proposing. I think I, I'm in favor of that. What, I get what Dave is saying is, is we're making all, we're making it really confusing.
Yes, well.
Is that just bad legislatively?
But it's, it's just straightforward on the line, and, and nobody's going to be confused of what the zoning is across the street here. You know, in, in this yellow area, the zoning is what it is. And each one is going to be zoned what it is.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I can, what, I do think we need to add R2 and R1 to the medium density residential. And that's really what I'm pushing here is, um, I think this development in of itself, I think the developer has done everything he can to try and mitigate the, the effect on the neighbors.
Right.
Well, so Jordan, then, based on that, then, with the knowledge that in two weeks, there's a potential that that's approved anyway, and the development won't change, we will be able to downzone, uh, based on what came out of planning commission with their recommendation. Does that change anything?
I mean, that changes everything because now he could do an R2.
Yeah, and then you can ask for what he's actually getting.
Yes.
So once again, we go back to what's the cost to jump through hoops? So if, if we can make it so that this doesn't cost, I mean, because our end result would be the same. So if it, if we can mitigate the cost or the timeline for him, is that something we can do? Um, because it, it isn't fair to, um, knowing what we're going toward to make it costly for him to just continue on the same path. So, so what is, can you give me exactly what it would entail to, to approve the agenda now? Or to postpone it, and can we subsidize the cost?
What is the cost of doing this the right way?
We just established that it doesn't have to cost anything financially.
Fine, what's the, what's the delay for him as well?
One, one. One, one additional, um, option out that we've really discussed is you, you could, um, you know, you could keep the decision as is, and then you could initiate a zone change to make it R2 at some point in the future. Um, and with, with the property owner's consent, I don't think you'd have, you know, any sort of issues there. Um, so that wouldn't slow anything down. If, if you ultimately like what's being proposed, then you can stick with what's been approved. If you don't like what's been proposed, then, then I'd say change your, uh, you know, change your vote. Because you can go back and you can change the, the zoning. If, if, if the concern is, you know, future councils will look at this or future property owners, you know, say, oh, R3's all in, you could change it to R2, uh, which wouldn't affect any of the approvals or the, you know, the subdivision, right? I think it sounds like.
That I can get behind. I guess what are your thoughts on that? Are you guys okay with that? Zone it R3 right now?
Yes, because also the fact too, if we, if we reject this, then there's no development agreement on the table and it can change.
Yeah, I, I'm okay with, uh, that approach, as long as the entire council and the developer are willing to go along with that.
Thank you, Paul.
That's a good, it's a good compromise.
I'm good with it, because I wasn't planning on changing my stance on it currently, so I think that makes sense.
Yeah, let me, let me be clear then, w- with the approval of the minutes. What we are talking about is approving the minutes of October's twenty-seventh with the amendment of the address as shown. Uh, and then coming back later and making, making the change with, with the, with the zone. Is that what we're saying?
The general plan and the zone.
And the zone. Okay, so what we're saying is that we make the amendment to those meetings, we'll approve those meeting minutes and move on, and then we'll make the adjustment later.
That, that allows us to stay clean legislatively.
Okay.
And do this the right way.
Okay. Counsel, we have before us the approval of the minutes of October thirteenth, twenty-twenty business meeting, October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty work session meeting, and the October twenty-seventh meeting, twenty-twenty, with the amendment, uh, listed in, in regard to the, uh, the address as not a, as incorrectly posted. Uh, any other corrections to those minutes? Hearing, sign, none, and I, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
And that was Corinne?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seth, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Okay, I take that as unanimous. Thank you. Let's go to our consent agenda. Uh, on our consent agenda, as, as we have spoken in work sessions, authorizing the administration to execute Second Amendment to Annexation and Development Agreement for property located at seven hundred South, four thousand West and twelve hundred South and four thousand West, known as Criddle Farm Subdivision. We also have, uh, to authorize the administration to execute agreement with Weber Basin Water Conservancy District for the sale and the use of District Three untreated water. And we've also discussed the proposal ordinance twenty-twenty twenty-seven, amending the zoning map from agricultural A1 to residential R3. Uh, sixty acres located at approximately twenty-four hundred West, thirty-seven hundred South. Now, maybe that one we ought to set aside. Paul?
I see for the zoning.
Yeah, if we're going to.
Yes.
If we're going to.
Let's get Paul's word though. Thank you, mayor.
Oh, Paul, would you, would you weigh in here?
Maybe.
I was on Dropbox and not on, on the, sorry, so, and I'm, I'm just jumping back to the agenda again. So we're looking at, it's the consent on C.
Yeah, if we're going to reconsider that, uh, in our next meeting, should we just postpone this? Um, maybe I'm a little confused.
Yeah, this is, this is the, the green property or the, uh.
Oh, this is, okay, all right.
Separate education.
Okay, I, I was confused too, okay.
Okay, we're good. This is the Green Property Council over, over, uh, uh, off of Gentile and uh, any, any discussion? Anyone want to remove any of those from the consent? Hearing and sign, none, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have Seth and then Lisa. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, I assume that that would be unanimous. Let's go to item number six, and Lisa, would you be prepared to lead us out? Uh, this is Brody, recognition of community and economic development department for graduating the economic development program from a Utah. They would address this one.
Sure. Uh, okay, um, hold on, I'm just bringing up my, uh, my notes here. So, uh, on October twenty-third, uh, the city was part of the first class, um, in the state to be awarded this certificate from EDC Utah. Uh, it's for our graduation in the Development Ready Community Program. We were one of eight communities in the state. Uh, to go through this, it was a five-stage program. And it's designed to better prepare communities to attract and grow competitive companies and foster the expansion of local businesses.
To go through these stages, it included a market demographic research, a SWOT analysis of the city. Um, you know, our strengths and weaknesses that we have economically, uh, some training on how to attract and host um, uh, visiting companies on site uh, in the city, uh, different, you know, when they come and look at sites in the city to possibly develop. Um, and it also helped us develop relationships in the economic development community. Um, the achievement of this certificate is primarily due to the efforts of our community and economic development director, Noah Steele. And he he manages our economic development efforts of the city. And uh, his efforts have given us a really grounded, practical understanding of the city's potential in economic development based on data-driven research. Um, you know, this is sort of the, you know, it it's kind of like the foundation of a house. It's really the part you don't see from the street. But it is necessary in understanding what we have here in the city and what our potential is. Based on, you know, the market research so that we can move forward with our economic development planning. So this was actually kind of a first step uh, in getting our economic development plan really put together, a solid economic development plan. And so I want to recognize Noah for for his efforts and leadership in it. Um, and uh, just wanted to let the council know that that uh, that uh, he made he made the city proud.
Good job.
Great job. Yeah, awesome.
Oh, well, you've grown up so fast.
Actually, I'm very impressed in the short amount of time that you you did this. Good job.
Well, I would say it was a team effort.
Nine counties in Utah and to as I look through the list and there are only eight that have completed the program and they're they're really scattered. We're the only one in this area right here. Makes me proud of you, Noah. I'm grateful for your hard work.
We'll take the things we learned and try to implement them and attracting business.
Thank you. Thank you, Noah. Let's move to item seven. Uh, discussion and and or action on inter-local agreement with Wasatch Integrated Waste Management District for the use of CARES Act money. Brody, uh, Brody, are you leading this one?
I am. Uh, let me bring this up.
And Corinne, would you be ready to respond?
Sure.
Okay, so this is very similar to uh, the agreement we did with the mosquito abatement district. Uh, regarding use of CARES Act money is for the exact same purposes. Um, they've been using it to for for defense and, you know, fighting COVID within their um, operations there up at the up at the landfill. Their costs have been distributed. This is once again distributed amongst all the cities in the in the county. The the proportion uh, set aside for Syracuse City would be six thousand three hundred and seventy six dollars and three cents. Uh, included in the packet is a snapshot of our existing plan for CARES Act funding. Uh, along with what would be an amended um, CARES Act funding plan. So basically, we would uh, we we would set aside some money out of the reserve um, in phase three for that much. Uh, which we have plenty. So there there's still almost six hundred fifty thousand left in in reserve. While we're talking about this, I I do want to mention also that, uh, you know, some of the other line items we have in our our CARES Act funding plan have come in under budget. So we do have more than what's in our reserve um, still available. And we've gone through this latest round of of business grants and we probably have, uh, we probably could grant about for about you know, four hundred thousand of that six hundred fifty thousand to uh, local businesses. And so uh, I do want to mention that. It's a little bit separate from this discussion, but it does play into our overall plan here, uh, that's in the staff memo. So if the council's okay with that, we'd like to um, actually, uh, now that we're coming down to the end of November, which is the deadline to spend the CARES Act money. Um, and and we've got pretty much everything else, um, you know, taken care of. We do have money available for our area businesses. And so if you're okay with using that reserve uh, for the grants, um, we can.
Corinne, would you need us out?
Yes, um, first of all, I I just want to say um, that there was such integrated race obviously has a lot more employees and higher operating costs than mosquito abatement district. So but I appreciate very, I'm sure that one of those big trucks costs same as several of the small trucks at mosquito payment. So that the thing that I appreciated the most was the breakout, which you're showing right now per household. That's a lot of work that they went through to figure that out. And so I appreciate how they did that to make it a a fair distribution per residence. And especially considering that we each need a garbage can. So this is a lot of work and and I'm grateful that we can support them. And yes, I would support doing some more grants for our businesses if we could.
Open discussion, council. Are there others that would like to add to that?
Well, the only thing I, as I was looking through the list of items that have been purchased. I think most these, what's that?
TV. Is there a TV question?
Is there a TV there? I missed that.
Forty eight hundred dollar TV or something, TV and stand.
Well, my mine was actually, it looks like where they purchased um, wires, keyboards and monitors for people working at home. Uh, I just know that at my work, um, you know, they they would provide a laptop that we'd have to have to turn back in. Or um, uh, what I'm not in favor of is just buying people home PCs. I I I do have a little bit of concern there where we're actually buying, like if it was, like I say, I'm okay with a laptop that's turned back in. But when it comes down to something that is just going to be handed over to people and say, here you go, here's a new computer for your house.
Yeah, any, I think with Jordan, any thing that is real property is the property of the city and needs to be turned back into the city.
Or integrated ways.
For those purposes.
Or integrated waste in this case.
Yeah. But thank you, Jordan. I didn't even.
I didn't see.
Yeah, so so that brought me a little bit of, gave me a little bit of pause where it looks like they're buying personal items for people. Um, the the TV, as long as it's um, again, used for uh, trainings and shop, I'm actually okay with that. I think that's fine. Uh, the only thing that I was really worried about was where it looked like we were buying personal items for people.
Well, and I don't, I don't have an issue with the personal items because I mean, there, if it's like my work, you buy the, you buy them and you mark them on your controlled assets database and and track it and they return it. There's no, I don't know that they're necessarily saying it's a donation to their household. And it says keyboards, monitors. So just a an a, an appendage to the to the laptop setup because I mean, I don't know about you, but I can't work with a laptop at home. I also bring home monitors and keyboards and speakers and a stand and I return them.
Yeah, and if as long as those are being returned, then I remove my complaint. But if they if they are now um,
How do we know?
Upgrading someone's home PC, then I'm less okay.
So so one of the um, one of the backstops we have in the inter-local agreement is if if any of the items are deemed to be uh, non-compliant with the CARES Act. Wasatch Integrated agrees to pay us back as as we as we would be required to pay the federal government back.
So basically lays the burden of proof on them.
Yes.
Yeah, and I don't have an issue with the TV. I was just joking, but I was I was kind of having a little bit of heartburn around the forty two hundred dollar price tag on a TV because.
Yeah, that's a nice TV.
That's a little steep. I mean, it's.
You can get like fifty six inch for lots cheaper.
Well, I'm also seeing things like car chargers for for people wanting to charge their phones in their cars. Again, those seem like personal items that I can't get behind.
They are personal items.
But you know, like like Brody said, at the end of the day, it it comes down to the to the review of the the CARES Act dollars and if it gets rejected, it gets rejected, right?
But who is reviewing that? I thought we were reviewing it right now.
We might be. That's the good.
I don't think we are. So this, yeah, this is what they've submitted and um,
obviously, we can make a decision based on the information we have. What what the agreement, what the agreement says is that, you know, if if any of these are deemed to be non-compliant, then then they would they would re- refund us. So, I mean, there's nothing in here that that clearly says that it's not, uh, you know, that that it is personal. Like, all these things could be Wasatch integrated property. Um, that they they check out, return and that sort of thing. There's nothing that says that it's otherwise, but.
Extreme to have a thermometer for over five hundred dollars for temperature checks. What kind of um, thermometer? That, like, they have it several times, but there's one for a hundred, but if you go up.
Thirty five, it's thirty, it's three hundred and fifty nine dollars.
Fifty nine, and there's another one in August, I believe.
So my work has an iPad mounted on a stand that has a thermo- the temperature scanner on it. And I could see that easily costing that much.
Okay, so it must not just be your little handheld. I'm wondering why they didn't.
Scanners are a lot cheaper. You should tell your work.
Uh, they've already bought like fifty of them, so.
Those darn CARES Act dollars.
Yeah.
I'm good with it.
I mean, I'm fine with it as long as these things are actually being reviewed and we're just not buying people home PCs and car chargers.
Yeah, seriously, we should find out if it's us that is, if we're the review board saying whether or not it should be funded by us. I mean, I would hate hate to have this the state come back to us and say, well, you approved it and you paid for it out of the funds we gave you. Therefore, you've lost that. You have to pay for it.
So one of one of the things we could do is if we have further questions on some of these items, we can request that from them and they can give us a response. Um, and we we can bring it back at a future meeting. This this does not have to be approved tonight.
Mayor, how do you feel about that?
I'm fine.
Okay.
So I want to bring up one thing as the second part of this. I have no issue if we go ahead and uh, authorize money to help our local businesses. But I think it should be more than just tagged on to another discussion item and just approved without discussion. So my suggestion is on that other part, we put it on next week's agenda. And we actually discuss it and approve it based on more than just tagging it on to this item.
We need to do this. Are you saying this one as well, Dave? Because
No.
Needs to be taken care of though before the end of November, correct, Brody?
It does, and we have a meeting next week and that's what.
This one as well.
Would we need to do that in a closed meeting since it's actually business finances?
Um, well, I think I think the idea here is we're what what council member Mon is saying is uh, we're amending the plan of where we're going to allocate money. We're not necessarily talking about individual applications
Okay.
Uh, in a in a public meeting.
Right.
As as you recall from before, we have a subcommittee, uh, council member Savage, um, and council member Bingham uh, to to review these and and uh, and with staff to go through these and and allocate the funding.
I'm not objecting to that.
And and so I think what, yeah, I think what council member Mon is saying is have a specific discussion on amending the allocation of our plan.
Oh, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Yeah. I mean, I want to talk about if we're extending beyond the RDA, if it's um.
We are.
Okay, that's. Calls for that.
We also need to have this item specifically on next week's agenda, though, with those clarifications. It's possible. Would that work out, Mayor?
Yes, Corinne, why don't you make a motion to table and we'll do all that by next week.
Motion to table this item to next week.
Second.
I have a second, my first and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Seems like that's unanimous. Brody and Cassie, can we, we'll leave this table and we'll research those things at Wasatch Integrated Waste. Okay, now, council, this is how I'd like to do this public hearing on number eight. Uh, with uh, Brody and Noah are gonna uh, uh, team up and do some pro- do some staff reports on each of these things, but we're going to hold one public hearing dealing with all this surplus property. Brody is pretty much going to deal with those things dealing uh, with UDOT and then Noah has one with the Bureau of Land Management. So Brody, can you give just a quick staff update on on A and C? And then Noah, would you be prepared to do B? And then I'll open this for public hearing.
Sure. Okay, so uh, we we we're coming, we're coming down to the wire on on uh, years of of discussion with UDOT um, on on the final land trade with them. Um, I'm going to walk through the properties that are that are in question here. Um, there was, there was again, a copy paste or a download glitch we had in item C. Um, so I'm going to take a little additional time in explaining that one. Um, because because of the glitch in the packet, so. But let me just walk through generally what what the deal is here. Um, what you're going to see on the screen, uh, there's going to be some yellow properties and some green properties. Yep, the yellow properties, and I'll just slide down here to kind of give you an idea. Um, the yellow properties are owned by Syracuse City to be traded to to UDOT. And the green properties are vice versa. Those are UDOT properties to be traded to Syracuse City. So we'll start here, uh, seven hundred South and uh, Rock Creek Park and the trail coming along here. We actually own this tiny sliver of land, basically under the trail. There's a parcel here. Um, so that that will go to UDOT as part of this deal. Um, this is where the alignment of the highway goes, just right along uh, that that area next to the trail.
To be clear, they are restoring the trail, but it'll be under UDOT control.
They will be rebuilding the trail, yes. Um, ne- next to the highway.
And we're not sure which side yet, correct?
Uh, it's uh, up on this side of the city, it is going to be on the east side of the highway.
Okay, so the part that you're showing right now?
Yes.
And then farther out, like we were just showing, um, will it be on the west side over by the three thousand west, uh, down to seven hundred? Do you know?
Um, yeah, well, yeah, we'll get down there. I think it uh, pretty much stays on the east side, I think, the whole way down.
Oh.
Actually, um, until we get down to well, yeah, I think all the way down.
Dang it, okay.
So, um, there there will be access points, you know, going going uh, along the roads to to get on the trail from from either direction, but.
Okay.
Uh, as as we come down here to where the intersection of Antelope Drive and the West Davis Highway will be right here. Um, this is all Syracuse-owned land here in yellow. Uh, this will be used for the highway. There will be a bridge going over um, the highway, uh, the pedestrian bridge that connects from the east side where the trail will be over to where the Arts Academy is over here in our park, uh, Fremont Park.
So there's going to be be a bridge at which part? Sorry.
Right along, right along here in this area.
Okay.
There will be a bridge uh, from the east side where the trail is across.
Is that a traffic bridge or a pedestrian bridge?
That is a pedestrian bridge.
Cool.
Uh, so that will be for the highway. Um, this parcel that is owned by the city will be used for stormwater management. This property is uh, considering, you know, under consideration for trades to the city. So that is owned by UDOT. Uh, in the agreement, uh, we would, we would um, take ownership of it. We wouldn't be able to occupy it until they're actually done with construction of the highway. Um, because they're going to need it for staging and whatnot for the construction of the highway. Um, and that is that is estimated to be completed at in the, by the end of twenty twenty four. So we come down further south. There is a property, so this is where the new roundabout is Bluff and Gentile. So it's south of that. Um, the city has property that will become part of the UDOT right away. And uh, there is a, there is a portion here that uh, UDOT um, purchased, but will be going to the. But we'll be going to the city, and that is a preservation for a future extension of Bluff Road. It would act more like a frontage road to the highway. And that would eventually connect over into, uh, Leighton Parkway. Down south. Okay, now, along this whole corridor, it, um, basically from the north end of the city, all the way down to, uh, pretty much Jensen Park, is, uh, the Leighton Canal, which is owned by the Bureau of Reclamation. Um, Noah's gonna go into that a little more. Um, and so I'll turn the time over to Noah if you wanna go through, uh, what the the agreement is for that one.
Yes, uh, so in connection with the West Davis Corridor, if you, Brody, if you don't mind zooming in there north of where the parking right will go. Uh, yeah, just right in there. Trial, trial at St. Andrews. There makes a little corner there. The the freeway is gonna go over that portion right there, and there's, there's Leighton Canal that runs through there. It'll be realigned slightly, and so they'll, is what they want to do is, or they want the city to to warranty deed some of the right-of-way, uh, over to the Bureau of Reclamation. Uh, it'll still remain, it'll still remain, uh, city right-of-way. And the city will still maintain the utilities and everything in the road. It'll just get realigned slightly. And so it's it's a pretty simple thing, and then there's, there's the same thing with, uh, seven hundred South. There's another little portion. So there's, there's three little pieces with a total acreage of about half of an acre.
It's where they cross our road.
Just where they, just where it would interfere with our road, so. Where the where the pipeline would be underneath where our road is, or the freeway would be over our road. That's where they want the the deed to be transferred. Those those warranty deeds are in the packet, too.
Can I ask why it's better to warranty deed this rather than just allow utility right-of-way or easement? I am just not for clear.
It's a good question.
Yeah, um, Bureau of Reclamation has been a key stakeholder in this whole process, and they're a little particular about, uh, who owns land and what you can do over their pipeline, and, you know, the the schools had to work around them. UDOT's had to work around them, and, um, you know, it's a, it's a canal and has a potential for life safety and property damage if, you know, I think they're just concerned about all that water flowing through there. I mean, you've probably seen the pipe, the pipes laying there. I mean, it it moves quite a bit of water. So that's why I suspect, I I don't pretend to totally understand all of the requirements, but being a federal project like this, you know, we've just.
I guess I'm just concerned, is there anything that we give away with the right for the roadway? Could there be any future event or future reasoning why somebody could say, well, we actually have the ownership and we're gonna discontinue the use of the road for safety reasons or for something like that?
No, if you look at the warranty deed, I mean, it's still a road. Um, they can't like shut off the road for us, right? Just because they own it.
Yeah, the the law is is pretty clear. Once you've established a right-of-way, it's it's the public's. So the city can't like give away the public's right to use that. Um, it's it's really just the 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 federal government's insisting on, um, the warranty deed and the ownership being in their name. And if if, I guess if they don't get their way, they won't cooperate with UDOT, and they need their cooperation. So I think it's kinda where we were, where we are.
To be fair, I didn't suspect there was that issue, but because we talk about easements and ownership so often, I just wanted clarification.
That's a fair question.
Yes, yep.
Okay, anything else on that, Noah?
No, that was all.
Okay, so, yep, so there's that portion of of this. And then when we get into, uh, the trade with UDOT, and I'm gonna share a screen here. I got too many things open on my desktop, sorry. Here we go. Try this. Okay. So the general terms of the sale or trade and acquisition of of, th- this is item C, so Resolution twenty thirty-seven. Here are the general terms of of the sale. Um, let's talk about the properties traded first. Um, we'll go here to this table. There there are, um, this selection of properties that will go from Syracuse City to UDOT. Those those were the 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 properties that we just reviewed on the map. Um, it's total acreage of thirty-three, uh, point zero eight eight, uh, with a appraised value of one million five hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars. Now, in the agreement, there's a, there's a paragraph about the credit for the four F, um, adjustment. When UDOT came through and took some of our land, some of the land was already designated as parkland. And so as part of the federal regulation, they call it the four F, uh, regulation, they have to compensate us, uh, either by value or acreage. Um, the way, uh, and and we we approved this, I wanna say, gosh, it might it might be, it might have been a year ago. Um, this was where they traded us the property on Antelope, um, next to Founder's Park. Um, so they satisfied the four F, um, encroachment on our pro- on our parkland by giving us that piece of property. So there's a credit of seventy-five thousand four hundred, um, off of our value. Um, because otherwise we would be double charging them, because we would be making them pay for it, and we would have gotten land. So they, we make that adjustment off because they gave us land, um, instead of that money. Um, and so what we're left with is, uh, the city's value of one million four hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred. And then, uh, from the properties going from UDOT to Syracuse, uh, we've got about eight point three acres. Um, that's that piece just north of the Arts Academy at two million one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, and then the future Bluff Road extension, about one, one and a half acres at thirty thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars. So their their appraised value is two million one hundred and forty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars for a net difference of six hundred and ninety-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars that we would owe UDOT, um, at closing. Okay, so that's how, that's how that works. So that's the next bullet point, the net amount we would pay UDOT that amount at the closing. There's an occupancy clause because they have a construction project that they are, uh, doing. So that just says that, um, I I did talk to Randy Jeffries and and they agreed to amend the language so that it doesn't say we can occupy it whenever they're done. It now says we can occupy it when they're done with the highway or December of twenty twenty-four, whichever is sooner. And so what we didn't want, uh, on the original language is, let's say, for whatever reason, the legislature loses funding or cuts funding on the project and and all of a sudden the project takes seven years to get finished. Um, we didn't wanna wait seven years to be able to occupy that piece of property. Um, so we wanted at least a date certain, uh, so that we could, we could have some authority on it. Also, there's a clause of first right of refusal. So we are agreeing that the city, um, has the first right of refusal if the land being acquired by UDOT is ever placed on surplus in the future. So whatever time in the future, if highways aren't necessary, uh, for whatever reason, or if they, you know, for whatever reason, if they need to surplus this land, we would get first right of refusal. Finally, um, there is a clause in the agreement for consideration of future trades. Um, so we've, we've identified land near Bluff Road and twenty-seven hundred South. That's the piece of property that they own, uh, next to the roundabout. And, um, just so we're clear on what we're talking about here, I'll I'll bring up the map. So this property, ooh. So this property right here, um, currently owned by UDOT, they're stockpiling dirt there for the highway project. The agreement says that we we already pre-agree that, uh, the that UDOT will offer us that once the project is done. And the city can buy it at the appraised value at that time. And the reason it's in the agreement like that, um, first of all, it it was a latecomer in in being a possibility of whether, uh, they thought that they could sell it to us or not. And they're actually getting ready to award the contract and everything. So they they, quite frankly, they didn't have time to go through the appraisal and acquisition negotiation process. So what they said was, um, we'll, we'll keep it off of the surplus, you know, go out, go out to bid list, and we will pre-agree to sell it to you if you want it. Um, and so what we were able to do is make sure we don't have to compete, um, with, you know, the highest bidder, so to speak. Um, we can just buy it at fair market value once they're done with the project. The city is looking at that as, uh, a property for a secondary water storage pond, which our master plan says we will need, um, as our city grows. And so, uh, they they basically, what this clause does is it puts that property on reserve for us. Okay? Okay, so those are the major items of of the agreement, um, that we're asking you to vote on tonight. Um, and we do actually, we do have the agreement. So let me walk you through that. Okay, so here, this is the draft agreement. You've got your recital paragraph saying, these are the properties in question, the ones that I showed you on the, on the, on the chart. The values associated with each of those properties. Um, the four F, uh, discount, and, uh, the total agreed amount. Okay. You've got, uh, the exchange, title, there's an inspection and environmental review period so that we can do our due diligence, make sure we're not getting a property that's contaminated with, you know, hazardous material and those sorts of things. There's the the clause on covenants, representations, warranties. We're, you know, we're giving them a property that is clear, and we we actually have the authority to give it to them, those sorts of things. Paragraph five is the reverse of their their representations of what it is that they're giving us. Uh, there's clause on on closing, um, no later than ninety days after the effective date of the date. We'll have title insurance. Uh, there's the possession clause. UDOT had, will have, um, UDOT will have the right to possess the property, uh, upon the effective date of the agreement. Um, all right, here's the the draft language, um, of the occupancy of the parcel. Uh, this is, this section B is the one that, uh, Randy Jeffries at UDOT has represented to me that they'll amend that language.
That's for the one that's late coming that possibly for the retention pond?
No, this is the one, this is for all of the other properties that that says, um, uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four is the latest that we'll be able to occupy it.
Okay.
Now, in in reality, if if they get delayed in their project, you know, we we may not, we still may not be able to occupy it physically, but we would at least have control of the property and we could work something out with them to grant them, you know, a temporary construction easement, um, or something like that. But we would at least have control.
We could start charging them rent.
Yeah.
Yeah, fat chance.
Um, section ten, uh, just says, uh, that they're acquiring it for transportation purposes. That's why they're doing this. Uh, eleven is our, um, first right of refusal. Let's see, uh, it's waived if if the property is used. Um, so I'll just read it because it's short. City is aware, uh, provides that in certain circumstances, the seller of the property, which is, uh, being acquired for a particular public use, is entitled to receive an offer to repurchase the property at the same price that the seller received before the property can be put to a different use. The city is aware, uh, UDOT code that provides if the city property is declared surplus by UDOT, and the city has the right of first refusal, so. Uh, we we don't have any commissions. We don't have a broker that we're using. Information for notices for, you know, how we're gonna notice each other for any issues with the the agreement. Legalese, survival, miscellaneous. Uh, Paul, Paul can can expand on those if you want. Uh, paragraph sixteen, uh, this is the future trade parcels, so. Uh, we've identified that parcel by the roundabout. They've actually identified, um, our Bluff Pond parcel. That we 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 can, we can consider selling them the Bluff Pond, um, because they might wanna use it for stormwater management. So we could do a trade instead of a straight purchase, and so that's what that consideration is. And that's it. So that's the, that's the the rundown of of the UDOT, trade. Now, you may, you may be asking about this, the roughly seven hundred thousand dollars that's due at closing. That is to be covered by item nine, which we'll talk about next when the mayor's done with this one. Um, that will actually cover that cost. And so, uh, so just so you're aware, it's not just hanging out there that we're gonna have to come up with seven hundred thousand dollars out of nowhere.
Okay, so, Council, uh, any questions to either Bro or Nody before I open public hearing?
Did you just say Broa or Nody? I hear that.
Bowden. What did you hear me? What did, what did you hear me say?
You just switched the first letters, Broa or Nody.
Oh, did I really?
And so they have been named.
By the way, this is, this is my, uh, my homage to Veterans Day tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you.
That's awesome.
That's Nody you're talking about.
That's Nody, Betty. That's noteworthy, Nody.
Sorry, Brody, guilty by association.
Okay, I would now declare we're in public hearing. If there are any from the public that would make comment, we'd ask you to state your name and place of residence. We'll give you three minutes to respond. Again, if you'd go and to the participant, and if you'd raise your hand so I can see you. Cassie, again, if you'll watch. Hearing and seeing that.
I don't see any, Mayor.
Okay, hearing and seeing that I'll close public comm- uh, the public hearing on this issue. Uh, Council, as I see it, we have two resolutions before us, one dealing with the Bureau of Reclamation and then one with all these transactions. One dealing with the Bureau of Reclamation and then one with all these transactions with UDOT. We, let's consider them one at a time. Any discussion on item B, proposed resolution 2036, authorizing the transfer of property for the, to the United States Bureau of Reclamation? Any further discussion? I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we authorize proposed resolution R 20-36.
Thank you, Dave. You have a second? Second by Seth. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that is unanimous, Cassie. Let's go to the next one, proposed resolution R 30-37, authorizing the sale, trade or acquisition of various parcels with the Utah Department of Transportation.
Like to clarify, that was R 20-37, I heard R 30-27.
R 20-37.
I'll move.
Don't make me 80. Jordan, don't make me 80.
I make the motion that we authorize proposed resolution R 20-37.
Thank you, David. Have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Seth. Any further discussion? Corinne, did you have a comment?
I just said that was Jordan, but that's okay, you know, it's hard with Zoom.
Yeah, I don't have Seth's good looks.
Would you correct that, Cassie? That's gotta be Jordan. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Cassie, that passage you asked me, Brody, let's go on to number nine.
So I guess, can I just ask for some clarification? I noticed that on 8A, that we are declaring various, various parcel of real estate, low, real estate located near the preferred alignment of West Davis Corridor Project as surplus property. What is the action on A?
Yeah, is there?
What is the declaration we're making?
Paul?
Surplus those at a later date?
I believe that is to be done tonight, actually. Is that correct, Paul? They should probably vote on, should they vote on eight?
Eight.
I'm, I'm juggling the packet and the zooming thing. Hang on, on my iPad here. So on 8A.
8A, it says declare that we are surplusing those properties, but there's no actual resolution or
declaration or declaration.
Yes. Yes, yeah, so we needed the resolution for the UDOT and the Bureau transfers because they said we need a resolution. There's nothing in, in the code or anything that says that we have to have an official ordinance resolution. You can just declare it by, by the motion and by the action.
Yeah, do we need to vote on A as to make that declaration?
Or have we done so by the resolution in 2037?
Yeah. We do need a separate vote for that.
Yeah, they voted on.
I make the motion that we declare those partial surplus.
A second.
First and a second. Any further discussion?
Thanks, Dave.
All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Cassie, that is, they're not declared surplus.
Just want to make sure we didn't have to come back to that at a later meeting.
Took care of that.
Good catch.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Jordan. Number nine, Brody.
Okay, so number nine, so this is the, this is actually all part of one giant solution for the UDOT project. This property. We have, we have to, in order for this solution to work with UDOT's project, we, we have to sell it to the neighbor, which is the Syracuse Arts Academy. The, the UDOT project is going to impact the school's current layout and their traffic flow. And so in order to solve that problem, they're actually going to run their morning and afternoon pickup and drop off through a ring road that actually crosses through this property here outlined in red. And so it just so happens that Syracuse Arts Academy is also interested in expanding their, their campus. And so from a, from a strategic standpoint, economic development standpoint, it makes, it makes sense for the city to, to do this transaction and, and acquire the property to the north. And so it accommodates a school that we have as a member of our community. And it also furthers the economic development goals of the city. That's what we've discussed so far in, in previous, previous meetings. So this, this particular item, number nine, is to declare this property as surplus and consider a sale to the, to the Arts Academy. And so outlined in red is generally the, the property that we're actually selling. Let me, let me walk through the terms of that agreement here with you. I was already there, sorry. Okay. So based on an appraisal, the property will be sold at a value of $4.50 a square foot. There will be a $25,000 deposit within three days of the effective date of the agreement. As part of the agreement, the Arts Academy agrees to guaranteed access by the public, both vehicular and pedestrian to Fremont Park. And to the trail that will, that will connect in across the highway. The, and that trail is already there. We just wanted to make sure that all access is still guaranteed to, to the city and to the public. And they were, they were happy to, to accommodate that. There's also a clause about future consideration of shared parking. They, they don't have their final design of how they're going to actually utilize this additional land. But they have indicated that there, there will likely be additional parking on, on their expansion of their campus. And the city will, will have additional parking at Fremont Park that we have planned to, to expand. And what we're going to do is have, just have an agreement to share that parking. So, you know, if, if there's a soccer game at Frem, if there's some soccer games at Fremont Park, our public will be able to park on their parking lots. And vice versa, when there's a, when there's a game or something, or an event at Syracuse Arts Academy, they can utilize our parking at the park, at Fremont Park. So across parking easement, there's 45 due diligence, 45 day due diligence period to conduct all their environmental or any kind of examination of the property prior to closing. And then upon, upon closing, the Arts Academy is granted possession of that property. So once they, once they get the property, they are receiving money from UDOT for that ring road and some modifications to their current layout to make that work when, when, when the highway gets built. So what we're looking at tonight is to vote on whether to authorize us to enter into a sales agreement for the sale of that property as described.
Thank you, Brody. Dave, would you weigh in as our liaison with the SAA?
Yeah, this project's been long in process. And I think it solves multiple things for both us and them. We've always intended for this to be green space and they intend to use the majority of it as green space. So it actually benefits the citizens beyond just this opportunity. So this is really good for them. It secures the future of their school. It's really good for us because it gives us potential beyond this and future opportunities. And it gives the public green space that can be shared. We've shared with them for years. They're fully intend on being able to share back with us as long as, under the same conditions that we share with them, as long as it doesn't impede our plans.
Okay, now I'm going to open public hearing for a discussion on this from the public. Seth or Jordan, would you be prepared to lead out a discussion when, when that hearing is, is completed? So I, I now open us to a public hearing to the, concerning the property that would be sold to the Syracuse Arts Academy. If you would state your name and place of residence. And, and we'll give you three minutes to respond, to address the council. Dale?
Just, just wanted to chime in on behalf of the Arts Academy and say thank you. We're extremely excited about this opportunity. The board is 100% on board and appreciate all the work that Brody has gone to. I was Brody's shop teacher in junior high school. He's come a long ways. And is, is a good man and it's been great to work with you, Brody. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I have all my fingers, thank goodness.
Yes, yes, I was hoping you'd say that.
Thank you, thank you, Dale. Anyone else, if you'd meld yourself with raising your hand on the side? Cassie, are you seeing anyone? I'm not seeing anyone. All right, I'll close public hearing. Jordan, would you lead us out in an open discussion?
I think most of what I would have said has already been said. I look forward to this being finally turning into real green space. It's always been slated as such. I, anyone that's ever parked at this park, any improvements to the roadway and parking would be very much appreciated by anyone going here. So I think this is a win for both us and the Syracuse Arts Academy to get this developed into green space and get the, the road lined up. And, and just, it's a good cooperative effort and thank you to all the people that put this together.
Anyone else like to comment from the council?
I just have a quick question about the trail, Brody, you said that the trail is going to be on the east side of Bluff Old Way, right?
This is where the, the pedestrian overpass meets up to it.
Yes.
Well, that's just a clarification that I was asking because if, if there's any trail, I mean, I'm grateful that the easement clause is in there. If it happens to be on the west side of the land, but it sounds like it's all going to be on the east.
Yeah, so this is the connection that exists right now. That'll remain. It may have to get rebuilt, but it'll remain.
Okay, so that section of the trail is really what we're talking about on the easement?
Yeah, and it'll go all the way across the highway here to the other side where the, the main trail is.
Okay, so that, that's all city trail, okay, all right. Thank you.
That continues, yeah, I think all the way down on the, on the. I'm trying to think down here, Robert, by Jensen Park, is it, does it cross over onto the south side?
There'll be a.
I'm trying to think too, so.
Pedestrian bridge that goes north, south where the existing trail is. So it'll keep going and then cross over West Davis Corridor just south of the, of the ponds, right there. I have a pedestrian bridge right there.
That's right, thank you. It does have a bridge over where the canal is, you're right.
Okay, so Syracuse, really the, the true trail will be almost all entirely on the east side of West Davis.
Yeah.
This will eventually tie into the legacy trail as well, correct? Go all the way to Salt Lake.
Yep.
That's what I'm excited about on the south end of it, the trail's going to just keep going.
Yep, you'll be able to, to leave your house, Jordan, get on the trail and go all the way to Provo.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at an e-bike right now because I can't pedal that far.
Got it, come on.
Okay, counsel. I'm looking for a motion to not only surplus, declare this a surplus property, but authorize the city to enter into a sales agreement with SAA. So moved, I have a motion by Dave. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, that was Jordan.
Oh, come on, let me have it this time.
Eminem voice underneath it, so.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Cassie, would you record that as, as unanimous? Let's go to item number 10, Noah, public hearing. Would, would you talk about the parcel located at 1200 South and 1000 West and surplusing that property?
Yes. So hopefully you can see my screen here. As you know, the city owns 20 acres on 1000 West. And we did a study to determine how much cemetery we would need for about the next 50 years. We determined about eight acres. And so we're, we're setting that aside. We've worked out with Clearfield to adjust our boundaries. In previous, you know, so this has been done all in previous meetings and public hearings and things like that. So that's been done. But what's remaining is about 12 acres of land. It's in Clearfield City, but the city, but Syracuse City owns it. Through our surplus property, we're required to, like we talked about in the last one, have a, you know, we don't need a resolution or ordinance, but just a vote to surplus it. Planning commissions weighed in on it. They recommend, they don't see a problem surplusing it either. So once you surplus it, then, then the city can get an appraisal and take bids. Or there is an option to sell to somebody strategically for economic development purposes. But we think that this one will probably just keep it simple and go with the bids. But all that's on the table right now is just kind of up or down. We, we good surplus, you know, moving the status of the property to surplus.
Okay, I have a question for Noah. At this time, could that, could this action item, when we get to it, could it also include the council's approval for, for it to go out to an RFP?
Yeah, that's, if, you know, you can provide that guidance of, you know, if you look through our surplus property policy, that's one of the decisions that you can provide that guidance or we can cross that bridge in the future if we want to think about it, but. I think mayor, I think mayor by default, we would do, we would do RFP competitive bidding. It's only, I think we would just take action by the council if you wanted to do something different than.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, thank you for helping me and correcting me. Item 10, public hearing. I now declare that we're in public hearing to consider surplus property that is actually in Clearfield City and to declare it a surplus property by the council. If there's anybody present who would like to address this issue, if you would, if you would raise your hand in the participants list. Can't see people with the cemetery plat on there.
Mayor, I don't see any raised hands in the participant list.
Not seeing any, I will close public hearing, counsel. Seth, do you want to lead us out?
Sure, yeah, so I don't have any real concerns here. I think as, as has been discussed with, with me, to catch me up, that this property was kind of in discussions with Clearfield already kind of, to some extent, considered for residential development anyway, so this would make sense to me.
Okay, any other discussion, counsel? I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we declare this property surplus.
I have a motion from David. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Lisa?
No, this time I, I didn't say the word.
Second from Corinne, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Cassie, would you record that as unanimous? Okay, all right, we are moving on. Let's talk about Noah property located at 2068 West and 1700 South.
Okay, this is the property that we bought a few years ago in the town center. I think it's always been anticipated that the city would sell this, but it hasn't, you know, if it, that, that switch hasn't been officially flipped. We are receiving some interest in the property. So authorizing a surplus would, would begin, you know, that process of, of getting appraisal bids and all of that, like we talked about the last one.
Okay, Lisa and Seth, are you familiar with this piece?
Yes. Yes.
I'm a frequenter of Carl's Jr., so I'm
Okay, let me, let me open this to public comment. We're now in public hearing. Uh, to discuss this piece of property, if you have, uh, a comment, we'd love to hear from it. If you give us your name and place of residence, we'll give you three minutes. Cassie, I don't see anybody. Do you?
No, I don't.
Okay, I'll now close public comment and, uh, Lisa, do you want to lead us out?
Sure, I think I was here right in the beginning when we bought this and, and just considered that we could that it's vacant now, we'll probably end up doing, somebody will want it at some point, so I'm glad to hear that there's some interest in it. This just seems like what we always intended.
Okay. Any other comment, council?
My only comment is that when we do use this, uh, we use this as a a tool as part of our RDA to try and fix this parking lot.
Yeah.
And to clean it up. The weeds are ridiculous. But other than that, uh, yes, this allows us to take that step.
Yeah.
I would just comment that it was our purpose in, in acquiring it, that we might be able to move the property to development faster. And it seems like that is true because it's only here and, um, it sat vacant for many years. So I'm excited that that's come to fruition. But my, uh, concern is just that we would still review development so that we make sure that it's well utilized and of course, as Jordan said, hopefully it can facilitate the parking restructure.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that, uh, once you surplus a property, there's an actual, you know, if we're actually gonna sell it, then there'll be a sales agreement that would be approved by you, just the way you approved the Syracuse Arts Academy sales agreement. So uh, this won't be the last time that you see it.
Perfect, thank you.
In such case, I'd make a motion that we surplus this property.
Thank you, David. Second. Second by Seth. Uh, any further discussion, council? All in favor? Any opposed? Uh, Cassie, would you record that as, uh, as fit, as, uh, unanimous? We have an ordinance amendment before us, uh, involving, uh, section ten eighty-five dash oh twenty and ten dash eighty-five dash oh thirty of the Syracuse code. Noah, would you lead us through this one?
Yes, so there's only a few places in the city where we have professional office currently zoned. Um, one of the places, um, is on Antelope. Uh, in a, and it's a older home that has frontage on Antelope. And so we have somebody who wants to live there and run a daycare there. But the way the professional office zone is written, you can't do that. So she submitted an application, uh, to do it, to be able to amend the ordinance and uh, here in the packet is the proposed ordinance, so uh, the permitted uses, we would add daycare and preschool centers. And under conditional uses, we would add dwellings, but only very lim, you know, there's some conditions already stated, limited to one unit per property. Occupancy of the unit shall be limited to the business owner or, or employee and their family. Uh, and remember, it was, it used to say minor here. Um, but after last time, you guys discussed making it a major. The only difference, there is a minor. So anytime you have a conditional use permit, both times they have to apply for it, so they have to pay for an application. Um, but the only difference is that a minor is staff review, reviewing the same things. Um, and a major is with planning commission and a sign on the property and postcards out to the neighbors.
So if we have the language pretty clear that we want these to be separated residences and, you know, a formal business upfront type thing. Staff can verify that without additional costs and we can help encourage businesses to start sooner and without more applications, correct?
Yeah, and, you know, granted, we, we wanna, we wanna look at this holistically because this affects all potential businesses, but this, this particular case, it would add you know, a month, month and a half time for her to apply for a major conditional use permit and go through planning commission.
But if even any other future applications, if they're reviewed by staff, they can easily tell whether or not there's a, a separation problem or not, correct? This isn't like rocket science here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you, just using the word unit, like we talked about last time, kind of implies that there's you know, the separation there, but if, if you did wanna add some language, we, we could say that.
With, with that said, I would propose that we change that back to minor because there's, there's no need for us to add additional steps if it's being reviewed and there's going to be separate units. Uh, I, I really don't think we need to add another step.
I think the reason we did bring up the other step and the reason that I still support it is because the, uh, the professional office is a very restricted zone in our city. It only occurs a couple of places.
Yeah.
And the concern that is, makes that different from somewhere else where it would be a minor is that you wanna make sure it's an appropriate dwelling location. For example, I have no problem with a daycare operating within somebody's home because we allow that through residential as well. But I would have a real issue if somebody wanted to move in to say the back end, end of their law office where now somebody is living in a, a retail space. Um, I don't think that that's necessarily appropriate. So I think that it should be reviewed by somebody beyond staff, and so that's my, that's why I considered a major, not a minor.
Well, you know, there's a lot of senators that live in their offices in DC all the time, so.
Not, not legally.
No, well, I'm just saying.
Legally, yeah, they do.
Legally do it. It's legal.
Let me show you some language that we already have in, maybe this, maybe we could borrow from this.
There's a big difference too between having a cot in the back room and actually having your residents be on a main street in a professional office area.
My, and, and I'm fine with that. My own, my only point is that staff can review this very easily, so I don't understand why we're making this
And I think the biggest difference is, right, is the public hearing piece and getting it noticed. And so I guess that's what we need to decide is if it's, if it needs to rise to that level, because the staff spends the same staff will review it either way, right, before planning for training or, or for this, and so do we think it rises to the level of needing the extra scrutiny of a, of a public hearing and, and noticing? And that's, that's really the question we need to, to answer. I don't, I don't think that it necessarily needs to, but I'm not, I'd love to be convinced either way.
I think my concern is that when we think of other things that didn't go through public hearing and then the public says, hey, I had no say in the fact that my neighbor suddenly got to have a major change in use on their property. I'm not saying that, that the public hearing will defeat that. I'm saying that everybody deserves to have a say. And it's really not that far reaching to give the public a chance to, to weigh in if they feel like, for example, let's say somebody wants to move in and, and open up a veterinary service, well, the, the extra pets and the extra animals may be a concern to a neighbor that is adjacent to professional office. And if somebody's trying to live work there, they should probably be aware that, that's, uh, you're gonna change their life, or I'm just suggesting that we need to give the public their due as much as possible.
So you're saying that we need to allow the public to scrutinize everybody else's property and staff can't do this?
No, I'm saying we need to let the public be able to bring to the table their concerns. I'm not really saying that it's, the public gets the lion's share of the opinion. You have to allow them to bring concerns forward. If you don't, you're cheating them of their due process.
What, what due process? And when it concerns your property within your household, within your business? I mean, is there a due process if they don't have to frequentate?
Um, yeah, they're neighbors. It may affect their property. We've talked about that in other situations tonight. Where what you allow on the neighboring property affects your rights on your property. So yeah, there's process. They have to be able to bring to the table concerns. And very likely, as we've seen throughout the history of council, that, uh, applicant can probably say, hey, I can adjust this that mitigates your concerns. And why not give them a chance to work it out in a great setting as opposed to being angry neighbors?
Is just that, I, I just don't understand why everyone gets to say in everybody else's property all the time is I, I just think that that kind of flies in the face of freedom of property, property rights. In your own property, what you can do with.
Not at all. You're affected by your neighbors. Why do we have code enforcement? We have code enforcement because people have rights to say what's next to them and what's not. It doesn't mean that I can prohibit my neighbor from doing what's within the boundaries. But it does give me the right to bring it forward.
Council to zone according to appropriate planning, but that doesn't mean that everybody's neighbor gets to complain against what you're doing on your property.
So here's my reasoning behind all of this.
It's like, sorry, I'll, I'll finish later.
Um, so for me, the, the point here is not so much that it's harder, easier as, as a minor or major. For me, I don't like residential in a professional office zone. So I'm okay adding an additional uh, step to make it a little more difficult to do this. Um, mainly because I don't think housing fits in a professional office zone. Now, this one is an interesting exception because it is a house in a professional office zone. So that's why I'm willing to make this exception. Normally, I would say professional office zone, nobody gets to live there. But for this, I, I, I do want to add a step in here simply because this really isn't a great fit for this zone. And we can do it here simply because of the extenuating circumstances. So I think under any other conditions, if it were not a home, I don't like the idea of apartment in a law office or whatever it may be.
Mayor, I'd like to hear your consideration on this just because you own a professional office. What, what would be the, what are your thoughts about this?
What I did years ago, years ago, I bought a home and operated a dental practice out of it and we lived in the basement. It was in a commercial zone and, uh, at that time, and so the, the conditional use was again, living uh, in an apartment in a commercial zone. I know right now that would not be allowed. But it did serve a purpose for our family. And it, and, and I'm, I'm not so sure that the end use of this property is there now. Uh, so I guess I wouldn't have too much heartburn with it being a minor conditional use, realizing that change is gonna come to this neighborhood regardless. And, uh, and it was certainly a blessing to my family to be able to live there for five years.
Thank you for that insight. I appreciate it. And I, uh, along those lines, I, I do think that uh, I wouldn't have a problem with, with somebody living in a professional office area simply because that's a, it doesn't impede. In my opinion, it wouldn't impede another office space. I don't think it would have any bearing on them, so I'm okay to go minor and I I agree with the mayor that we're probably going to see a lot of changes, so this will probably be a very short-lived issue.
Well, my, my concern is professional office is taking its first baby step into becoming mixed use.
And why do we have a problem with that?
Um, because I
Cause it's not mixed use?
Well, like, like for instance, the V vault, like we talked about before, has an apartment above it, so, and that's not a problem for anyone.
No, it's, it's a good conditional use.
It is.
Type of use too.
Well, we're, we're not stopping this. We're just saying, we wanted to make it a little bit harder because I don't.
We wanna make it reviewed.
But it would be reviewed by staff already, right?
Yes.
When you make it staff only, then staff is almost an automatic. When you review it by another level, then it becomes a little bit legislative in the fact that we consider whether it's a good use, not necessarily where there's just an acceptable use.
Does, does staff have a recommendation?
So yeah, just to correct that, it, it wouldn't be legislative at all. Um, it's the same, you have to apply the, the code, you have to look at the same, uh, concerns. I think what as, as Seth mentioned, the difference is there's a public hearing to which the public are invited, and if they have, uh, concerns, they may have some concerns or insight that staff wouldn't have. And I think that's really the distinction here is, do you feel like you need to have that, that, um, level of, of input from the neighbors? Um, or do you feel like staff can just handle it without it? Um, so, could, we, we've done some of these before and, and sometimes the neighbors come and they've got legitimate concerns with lighting or noise or things. Uh, sometimes they come and they, they demand that the commission, you know, denying the, the application and the commission just can't deny it because they don't like it. I mean, it ultimately comes down to, can you, can you mitigate any sort of, um, negative impacts that this use would have on neighbors? Um, so yeah, that's, that's what it comes down. It, it is administrative decision. Um, and, but what it, what the major provides is that it gives the, the neighbors an opportunity to provide their insight.
And what, what we always say with the conditional use is it's, it's actually an approved use. Um, but there's an opportunity to put conditions on it, like hours of operation or fencing or whatever, you know, to, to, it has to be directly related to health, safety, welfare.
It's already in the conditions, right?
And so those are the conditions. Sometimes the conditions are a little open-ended and the city can get himself, get themselves in in a little bit of hot water if they're too extensive, but is what Paul's, you know, said really well is where the city can get in trouble is say, say we have a, have one of these and we send the postcards out, all the neighbors come out say, no, we don't want this. That's not the decision of whether or not it's gonna happen, cause it's already a permitted use. The only thing that the city could do is impose conditions. And like Paul said, sometimes the neighbor said, well, I have this, I don't know, wood chipper right on my property line. You better be careful, cause the kids will be by it, and we didn't know that that was there and, you know, so then that might be a condition that they had. I don't know, a twenty-foot tall fence right there, but, you know, I'm exaggerating, but, but the idea that, that staff is an automatic, that's not true. Um, we, we evaluate these things and we, we're worried about the kids that are gonna go to school there and we, we'll look at the parking and by no means is it automatic, but but, you know, like Paul said, sometimes the neighbors do have some good comments, but more often than not, the concern is that they come out with the pitchforks demand that the city deny the use, but that's not even the question at hand. And then everybody gets caught up in this you know, confusing situation where they wanna say no, but they can't because it's already permitted. So, and then the city looks back, so they can't shut it down.
Okay, so let's just say this. I don't, I think if we're trying to avoid people being angry over this, it sounds to me like the problem is we just need to do a better explanation at the beginning of such hearing that says, this is an acceptable condition. We're just going to talk about any modifications that need to be made or conditions in which this succeeds. That it's not a, a yes or no to the public. If they know that beginning, then maybe that changes that discussion. That it is simply, uh, you know, it is an acceptable use. But I don't think we should ever try to structure the code to avoid people weighing in. There's no reason why more eyes are not better than one said.
That's not my, my worry about this. My worry is that people are going to send emails and assume things right from the beginning that can be done, but can't be. And that everybody can have a say when they can't. And, you know, of whether or not to allow it, and that's.
It's on us to be good stewards of communication to make sure they understand.
But see, a lot of times we receive those emails that say, don't do this. And, and there's no follow-up. They don't want to, they are convinced that they have the right opinion, period. Whether or not we respond or not. And that's where the public clamor can be a problem. And I'm not saying.
Always respond.
Always input, fine. They can always take give their input always, but. The we're kind of setting ourselves up sometimes.
I think the greater concern is when you don't let them have a say.
Maybe maybe I should weigh in now. I told you what happened to us before, but let me tell you the process. Uh, cause I I tend to agree with Dave and Jordan. During the process time, I mean, it would have been nicer if we hadn't had to do this, but I was living in Chicago. And my father-in-law represented me before the planning commission. And then before the city council at that time for that conditional use. There was no real objection to that because I had no neighbors. There was a grocery store on one side. Fields on either side, but the procedure. At that time in nineteen eighty-two required a major conditional use. Uh, as we know it now, and that's how it happened. And I'm grateful for that opportunity. Uh, and I think we probably just need to do a better job of in in informing the public. And maybe. Maybe, uh, uh, I saw Brett was on earlier. I don't know if he's still there. Maybe he could comment, maybe during planning commission. When when you have these fair hearings, this education process might be something that could happen there from the chair.
Mayor, I've noted that as well to bring up just as a as a note to the planning commission.
Okay.
Doesn't look like he's still with us according to.
No, I didn't. I checked. He's gone.
Are we ready for a motion?
Thank you for sharing that, Mayor. I appreciate that. I I just want to comment on what Corinne, to Corinne's point, I do agree that there. The I, the public sentiment can be a real problem because then there is a. An across-the-board feeling that we don't, we aren't listening to them when it's actually just a matter of this is a conditional use. This is already permitted. We're trying to just get feedback to help the situation. So is there a way to make sure that when we do send out notices that we put right from the beginning? Either either, I love what Noah's been doing, um, where he'll say, here's where we are. Uh, on this list of ten or twenty things, this is where we are right now because sometimes the public thinks there is one or two. Uh, steps instead of ten or twenty. And and maybe on when we send out information about about um. The conditional use permit that we say this is an approved use. We are letting you know so that you, if you have concerns. That, you know, personal concerns that we can be made aware of them, but this will is an approved use. So I don't know, I I do agree that the communication is key and we do. Open up a a box of a a problem when we. Aren't communicating clearly with the public because most people really don't know what procedure is.
Yeah, what whatever you guys think, I'm happy to, you know. We can, it's not a big hurdle to to send out notices, but it does add time to businesses, but it's really up to you guys.
So what I'd like to do at this point is, I I think. I would actually propose that we accept or as twenty twenty twenty-eight as is with the major use.
They just seconded, Mayor. I don't know.
Wait, oh, Dave did second it?
Yep.
I broke up. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
It's fine.
Yeah, we'll do it.
You'll do it? You okay?
Yeah.
Are we unanimous there?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Cassie, would you record that as such? Now, council, you rece- you received an amended agenda today concerning enforcement of COVID. That uh, orders by the governor. Uh, Brody and Paul, can you lead us through that discussion?
Yes. Okay, um. What we want to talk about today.
Just fun.
It is, isn't it? Uh, I feel like Maverick. Um, so. What we want to talk about today is the enforcement of the governor's emergency declaration. It looks like the enforcement is going to fall on on us. Um, but there are some gray areas on on how enforcement can be done. There's some gray areas on. On where enforcement can be done. So I just want to kind of explore this with you and I'm gonna. I'm gonna call on Paul and Garrett to to color in um, some of the, some of the lines here. Uh, that I draw. So. Uh. I'm going to present kind of three categories of where we think enforcement will likely. Um, where we'll have to make some decisions on. One is uh, individuals or, you know, friend, the family gatherings on private property. Uh, where, you know, social distancing and mask mandates aren't being complied with. Now, the governor uh, um, indicated in his comments that, you know, we're not interested in going on to people's property. And issuing citations or arrests or anything. Um, and so. Uh, our proposal in regards to individuals and private gatherings is that. Our officers are not going to respond to those calls. Um, and and enforce the the emergency uh, declaration in in that environment. Um, a second category is our businesses that are non-compliant. So. For example, their employees aren't aren't complying with mask mandates or social distancing. Or they're allowing all the customers to to not comply. Um. With with that scenario, uh, what we think would be a good um, approach is to. We would refer, so someone will obviously call and complain. Um, our our approach will, what we think would work is if we refer that, first of all, to the business owner. So that call goes, so the the person with the complaint needs to address the business owner first. Um, and 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 try to try to see if the the business owner will comply. In addition to that, we will actually keep a log of that complaint that came in. And if we start to see a pattern with a business. Then we follow up with the business owner and say, hey, we've been getting several calls. Uh, about non-compliance with the emergency um, health uh, declaration. And we just wanted to follow up and see, you know, what are you doing as far as. Compliance and and that sort of thing. And we'll try to try to get them to get to compliance. Our goal in enforcement, our whole approach here is to try to get to compliance, not punishment. That's not what. That's not our approach. Um. To, our approach isn't to punish these, you know, businesses. So. That's that's another scenario. There's there's a avenue where we can refer that business to the labor commission and they would do enforcement. And Paul can can speak to that. Um. The third category are gatherings. Uh, or events that are produced essentially by a business. Uh, and and, you know, social distancing and mask uh, requirements aren't being followed. Uh, this is an area where we feel like the city probably shouldn't do enforcement. And show up if there's a call. Um, we address it with the producer of the event and the the property owner. Uh, there is some discussion and direction we need. Um, on how to enforce. There's different ways we can enforce, ranging from, you know, uh. Shutting shutting a a an event down. If we have the authority to, and again, Paul will talk about that. Um, or issuing a citation and just referring it for, you know, charges for later. And and not shutting the event down. And so, uh, one of the complications that we run into uh, is the the local health department. Um. You know, this is. You know, this is a little bit of a different uh, um. Than it has been a- as far as the health orders. So it's a little more serious uh, with the enforcement side of it. So. They're still trying to discuss and deliberate at the county level and the state level how how they want to handle enforcement. And so one of the concerns we have is. As of today, we don't really have the full backing. I don't feel we have the full backing of the health department in enforcement yet. And so what we want to do is we want to tread lightly and just try to try to get compliance through dialogue mostly. Uh, rather than enforcement, but we do have these options available now. The council, and the reason why, the reason why we're asking for your advice here. Um, you know, this is in a declaration of emergency. The E O C is open. Um, so so we we can enforce this, but you have a pulse on the community. And we want, we want your guidance on whether this, you know, how much of a priority you want on enforcement of this. Cause our officers, you know, we do not have unlimited resources. Um, and so we want to make sure that we have, uh, uh, we direct those resources in in the appropriate way. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Paul and he's going to fill in some of the legal issues. And then we'll go to Garrett to to talk about the specific enforcement issues. Paul? Yeah, so when it, when it comes to enforcement, there's there are sources of of authority um, in state code. Uh, one authority is, as Brody mentioned, the labor commission. Uh, the labor commission can um, investigate. They can issue very substantial fines against businesses uh, that are violating the orders. And and we got some communication, um, or Garrett did through a. Uh, through some channels uh, that they are are willing to do that and that they will step up and and take that enforcement action against businesses that. Um, I think that they will be focusing on businesses that are a little more flagrant um, in in the violations. Um, the other authority, um, obviously our our law enforcement officers have the ability to issue citations or make arrests. When they see violations of law occurring. Um, but the question of whether they could actually shut down an event. Um, doesn't seem very clear from our statutes. The clear, the clear body that does have that authority is the local health department. It's it's clearly in the statute, but it's under the the authority of local health department officials. Um, so what we what we might get, you know, let's say there's a party right in a week. And the police get called out and they go and it's at a commercial venue. And they show up and there's, you know, no one's wearing masks and and they're all over each other and who know, you know, whatever's going on. And so the the officer's there and he says, well, what do I do? Do I like arrest everyone? I mean, we don't have the resources to arrest everyone. Do we, you know, they could try to say, you better shut this down or else we can maybe try that. Um, so what we really need to do is get um, the backing of the health department, I think, when we, in that kind of situation. Now, officers could always, um, you know, refer a case uh, to to for prosecution. Um, a first offense of violating health orders is a class D misdemeanor. So it would come to me as the prosecutor from the city. Um, and and so that's probably the the route that they're going to take most of the time. Uh, we also have the ability to take action against business licenses if a business is, you know, um. Wanting these kind of uh, these orders and things. So we can, we we have definitely some enforcement mechanisms. Uh, but we, I I don't believe that we have the authority uh, for our police officers to actually shut down a event that's occurring. Um, so it'd be more, um, they can issue citations or or refer cases. And so that's probably what we're looking at. Um, so as Brody mentioned, you know, that what we're hoping to get is compliance. You may have a a business owner that, um, either they. Um, aren't taking it seriously because they think no one's enforcing, or maybe they don't understand uh, the the critical nature of things. Um, we we'll give people a chance to to comply, just like most code enforcement issues, you know, when when. When we respond to code complaints, we we always are trying to get compliance. And if people will comply. And and they're willing to work with us, we'll give them time and we don't punish people. Um, so that's that's our ultimate goal. Um, yeah, I think the question is, it is really a matter of resources. Do you want our officers going out and investigating every time someone calls and says, hey, someone's at. Walmart without a mask on? Or, um, you know. What what would you like us to do? It's kind of the 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 question for today. Does that answer all the questions you wanted me to address, Brody? Yeah, yeah, let's go to, let's go to Garrett and kind of get, um. His perspective on on kind of the enforcement side of it.
So council, the number one thing that I was worried about was the scenario that Paul just laid out, which is. You know, dozens and dozens of calls of somebody calling in and saying that. Um, you know, there's a shopper in the store who doesn't have a mask on. And the position that that puts the officers in because as Paul's are, as Paul and Brody have noted, I mean, if we're going to be dealing with this. From a request or a an idea of, you know, let's get people to comply. They've already had enough notice with this thing. Um, they're either not complying because they're not going to comply or they're not complying because maybe they forgot a mask that particular day. It just had to run in to do something, but to waste the resource or put the officer in the position to have to deal with this. Um. You know, that, that's where I'm, I'm asking for your. Um. I'm asking for you to weigh in on what you want your officers doing in this circumstance. Uh, the ones when that's, you know, if if it was a. Like a gathering at a home and they said there were twenty people there and it looks like nobody's wearing masks. It sounds like they've already addressed that and said. You know, the governor's not interested in in us enforcing those in the first place, so. Uh, we wouldn't be responding. And then the other ones, as Paul said, maybe this gathering where a company puts something together. You know, I think it's just an understanding that, yeah, I mean, if you got two hundred people. Um, in some business establishment, they're throwing a party or whatever. And nobody's social distancing, nobody's wearing masks. Uh, I understand why the public would think that's of such a concern that we should go at least tell people to. You know, that that they're not in compliance and they need to stop what they're doing. Uh, the problem comes in after that where if they say, yeah, we're not going to do that. Um, it's, we don't, Paul, as Paul indicated, maybe we don't have the authority and maybe it's just not. Really feasible to try and shut it down and run everybody out at that point anyway. So in reality, what that would likely be is a referral to Paul.
Okay. So, uh, I guess, uh, the time, I'd like to turn the time back over to you, Mayor, and the council, if you have any input. Uh, for us as we go forward and and discuss that.
Um, so I was just going to say, you know, I've recently had a lot of discussions with business owners as well as people on the. On the private side, private citizen side that are concerned both directions. And uh, the impact this can have on their businesses versus the um, you know, uh, negative impact it can have in regards to. Um, people creating. Negative reviews and such of businesses who don't follow some of these practices. So there's a lot of. Pressure on these businesses to comply with health department standards. And I would definitely love to leave it to the health department to kind of dictate and and get us some more rigid structure before we go in with. You know, guns blazing, ready to shut things down, which already sounds like we don't really have the ability to do. Um, but also at the same time, this is such a temporary thing that I think going drastic on it is probably a little premature anyway. Um, until we know long-term, you know, what this is going to look like, seeing how we're only on three days in. Uh, to the more rigid restrictions. And so. Um, at the end of the day, I I think we ask people to do it. And people are going to like, like Garrett said, you know, they're going to decide whether to follow it or not and. I don't know, that's the hill we die on.
I totally, I I'm sorry, is someone speaking?
I'll go after you, Lisa.
Um, I I think first of all. Our, our police and our first responders already have so much uh, on their plate and our police specifically have already been. An enemy to, you know, in the media and across the nation for. A few months to put them in a position of having to enforce something that is a mandate. And only sets them up for even more anger and more more, uh. Just the decline in sentiment towards them. And I'm not in in any way want to favor that. I also think that just as Chief Adkin said, that, um. People know, we already know. We've, we've heard about this. Everybody got that that si- that alert on their phone. We've, we've gotten those several times. And anytime you start to give a power to a neighbor. To tell on you and to enforce it, I think there is a tremendous amount of, um. Corruption that can ensue with that. And I don't want to in any way empower neighbors to tattle on each other. And I know that that might, i- it's not to dis- discard the fact that there might be people really concerned. About somebody wearing masks, but I think we've also forgotten that there is a six-foot rule. And if you can't be six feet away from somebody, then they say, wear a mask. And a lot of people are discarding the fact that there is already, i- if there's already six feet away from each other, then you shouldn't have to. Double up on this. double up on this. So I think that there's a lot of inconsistency. And it should not be up to our law enforcement to, to babysit. And it shouldn't be a tattle tell kind of situation. If ever there's a way to, uh, pit neighbors against each other, this is it. So I am definitely not in favor of having our, our first responders and our law enforcement enforce this mandate.
I, I'm along those same lines. Um, I remember reading a book, um, by George Orwell named nineteen eighty-four. And, and in there, like, not all of that applies to this specific situation, but there was a scene in there, where a father is being arrested and it was his daughter who turned him in. And I just remember that the dad was so proud of his daughter for, for being able to do, and I, I don't want, I agree, I, I do not want us, a society where, um, are, where, where we're trying to turn each other in, trying to turn on our neighbors and, and trying to find that evil person in the store, not wearing a mask. Uh, I, I think we have to be very careful. At the same time, I do not want to minimize the health risks that we're, we're going through right now. This is a very serious situation and I do want to encourage everyone to practice these safety measures. So, uh, the other thing I, I remember, um, I think it was actually, uh, last year, where we had two police officers surrounded by a group of what appeared to be about 20 to 25 youth. And fisticuffs ensued and I was very concerned about the safety of those officers because they were, very much outnumbered and backup got there quickly. But again, I don't want to put our first responders in those types of situations. So we need to be very careful. We need to step lightly. I think, uh, our approach of, uh, enforcing this primarily from the business standpoint. Uh, meaning that we will take complaints and if we see a trend where one business is getting a lot of complaints, um, we will go in and, uh, we will, uh, you know, that, that owner could be potentially, uh, facing a potential fine or, uh, if need be a misdemeanor. But I do think we need to take that approach instead of, uh, going out and trying to encourage the public to, to find the bad guy. That's all I have.
I would say, um, as far as businesses, if, if you have non-compliant businesses, that if a person realizes that, they don't need to go there. Um, I, I being in, in public health and everything, I agree that we need to, uh, do our part. But it's an individual decision truly when it comes to your health. And, and yes, we want to try to prevent it from spreading, but, um, we're all adults and you know the risk. Everyone knows the risk. If you're worried about going to a business that doesn't comply, don't go to that business. And the natural, uh, uh, what do you call it? The natural.
Predisposition?
Well, no, just, um, demand of, of success in a business, they will comply because they want people to come.
Yeah, they'll, they'll live with their consequences, right?
Right, exactly. One way or another. And, and, um,
But I don't know if someone's wearing a mask.
I do not support the police getting involved in this. Uh, it's going to be like Seth said, a short-term situation. And it's, that's, that's like a, a big, keg waiting to explode in a bad situation. So I would not go there.
Counsel, have you all had an opportunity to respond?
I would just say quickly that I don't think that, um, that the governor did us any favors by making it very clear how he expects people to, to act. And that's unfortunate. Because my greatest concern is that there would be a lot of people, uh, implying their own interpretations to this situation. I mean, when this first happened, we actually had people, uh, whether it was here or other places, there were people saying, they called that neighbor kids were out playing without masks. I mean, i- it's an interpretation thing. That's a nightmare for people. So, I do not want to send our, our police to enforce this. I would put it on the health department. If they need the backup of our police force to enforce their direction, then, I guess they can call us and say, we have an out of hand situation. Somebody's refusing to, to work with us. But I don't see, I don't see adding this as an enforcement issue. I know it's temporary, it's advice of the governor. It may be a mandate, but he didn't provide the, the means or direction of how it should be enforced. So I don't think we should run any further than he did. If he didn't provide that information, we don't need to, to tackle it.
Brody, Paul and Garrett, do you, have you gleaned enough? Where the council feels here?
Yeah, I mean, from, um, from what I gathered, uh, you know, I, I think, I think what we're gathering from a majority of the council is if we have some, if we have some, uh, kind of larger or, or, you know.
Repeat offenders.
Yeah, yeah, or, or gross offenders that are obviously, um, you know, with, with a large number of people, produced by a business, um, we can, we can address that. And it would, it would primarily be through, you know, a softer touch and, and citations and things like that, rather than, than shutting down and arrests. And, um, I don't know, Paul and Garrett, what, what, what are you hearing?
Uh, I, I understand what they were after with it. Um, I would say to the council, I appreciate you giving me the guidance on it. Uh, this is much the same direction that I, that I gave the officers since that was implemented in before this meeting. So I appreciate you, um, you know, again, weighing in on that and telling us which way to go in a situation that, uh, as you said, could have a lot of pitfalls with it. So yeah, Brody, I think we're clear on, on what the council expects us to do.
Paul?
Yeah, same here. I think I, I got that picture.
Okay.
And thank you for being such an example of what police force should be, Garrett. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate.
And counsel, I've been involved with discussions with these fellows and with the county, the, the county health department. Uh, and I can tell you that Syracuse is represented very well by these folks outside of our boundaries. So, thanks to both, all three of you. Appreciate that. And I hope, hope we've satisfied, uh, you have a feel for what the council feels. And, and I respect them for coming to you. Many, many, uh, agencies around us are just making this decision as management. And, uh, they, they didn't want to do that. They wanted to hear from you first.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, uh, we're at, we're at item fourteen, item fourteen, public comment. This is a time for those who are still with us. If you'd like to comment on something that the meeting has stimulated in your, in your mind, we'd like to hear from you. If you could just raise your hand or wave at me or something. I don't see any. Cassie, do you see any comment?
No, I don't.
Okay, I'll close public comment. Uh, council, we're, uh, council reports. Let's start with Lisa, cause you're in the upper left-hand corner. You're muted.
Thank you. All right. I wrote it somewhere. I'm not going to find here. Okay. Um, I just, we know where, how that park bond went and I just wanted to publicly thank the citizens for getting involved. Um, I was for the park bond as a citizen, but I appreciated how many people went out of their way to fund and to support and to discuss it. And I especially want to thank the citizens who took great initiative in that and, and, and those were some good people who really cared. Also, um, just a, an upcoming ribbon cutting that we have and for a new business called Crafty Thriven. And that is on November twentieth at nine o'clock for any council members who can be there and any public who wants to be there, that'll be, it's, uh, by Twisted Sugar. So basically by what will be EOS Gym and behind, um, Arctic Circle. So.
Type of business is that? I was just curious. Sorry to interrupt.
I guess it's craft, craft stuff. From what I understand, it's got glitter and, no. So I look forward to seeing what their business is. It's, it won't be for another week or so, but, yeah, I, I tried to look it up a little bit. It looks like they've got signs and, um, I don't know. I do know there's glitter though, Jordan. So you can count on glitter. That's, that's what I know. So, anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you, Lisa. Corinne?
I would, um, add to that my gratitude too, to all those who, who helped with the public, um, the park bond. And, um, I, you know, the, the one thing I heard over and over was, um, the confusion about the language on the ballot and with our old bond, can, you know, they were thinking we were remodeling everything all over again. And it's unfortunate, but, um, I'm also grateful that there, there were so many people who were, are now talking about it and now are, know all about it. And I think next time it'll, it'll be even better. Um, and this Thursday is mosquito abatement. I have, I won't be getting you guys a report on what happens there, but nothing else.
Seth?
Yeah, um, I won't belabor the, the park thing as well, the bond, but, uh, I think, yeah. Also super grateful for all the citizens who came forward and voiced their opinions. Either way, it's, it's neat to see so many people involved and willing to, kind of weigh in and, and toss ideas around. There's a lot of people who came forward with, uh, with ideas on how to maybe restructure this in the future and, and, uh, get more positive support for a regional park. Um, but yeah, I think, again, I would echo what Corinne said. That was the most, one of the most common themes I got was just kind of, people reaching out and asking why we're building a Taj Mahal, uh, city hall building and stuff like that. Um, and the fact that it didn't need to be rebuilt. And so that language being so difficult to, um, I guess, I don't know, purposefully difficult was, was a, was a hurdle, but, uh, that's okay. Um, on, uh, my liaison work with Cook Elementary, um, I reached out to Principal King and, and kind of checked what's, how things are going. And, uh, I don't know if you guys heard, but there was a student that was hit, uh, in front of the school. Um, not a serious injury, but you know, could, could obviously be much worse. And, uh, there's been, as, as has been expressed over, uh, my time working with Cook a few times, as well as I'm sure in the past. There's a lot of feedback around, um, whether during drop-off hours, the street being so narrow, if it could be, uh, one directional, or if there's anything we can do to support their efforts to prevent future accidents from happening, because obviously it can be much worse. Um, and I'm kind of reminded of, you know, the right turn only on two thousand west during school drop-off hours and stuff like that. So, um, just want to put that out there, uh, that that's a major concern for them. Um, and the, the teachers, uh, who I'm super grateful for there and, and all across our city, are, uh, doing the best they can, given the, uh, the kind of turbulent nature of everything going on with COVID. So very, uh, grateful for our teachers and administrators out there.
Thank you, Seth. Jordan?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll talk a different park. So first of all, I want to, uh, give kudos to Cresta. Uh, it looks like Founder's Park is really coming along very well. It's looking really good. And the, uh, as the liaison to Syracuse Elementary, they really appreciate that we were able to get that parking lot opened up and at least partially so they can pull through and, uh, be able to get those drop-offs, because that really is a, a key part of their, 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 drop-off time, uh, facilitation. Uh, also kudos to Cresta. Uh, this is our first real city council meeting since the pumpkin walk. And with all of the complications involved with having to switch parks and all of the other items that you had to do, um, that really turned out well. Um, my kids were a little confused about the candy, uh, since it wasn't Halloween candy. And I did tell them that, that candy was, uh, unable to be used prior and it was, they was put to good use for this event. So, kudos to you for also finding a good use so that candy didn't go to waste.
We did add a little bit of Halloween candy, just a piece.
They're like, why is the, why, why are the, why is the wrapping's pastel colors? I'm like, well, let me tell you about an event that was canceled in April. So kudos to you. You put together a great show.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. David?
Well, real quick, mayor, on the, um, while we have Crest, I was just going to mention, is there something that we could talk to? I think the, the cardboard in the, in the recycling area, uh, at Syracuse Elementary, I want to say maybe the construction, teams on the park discarded a lot over there. And it's just, uh, like, are, are those giant round cylinders? Cardboard cylinders from the construction project by the bathrooms? Cause they're like rolling around in the parking lot.
Oh, no.
I mean, they're. You know, I'll go over and check the, I, the round cylinders I'm thinking of, that I'm thinking as for the footings, they might've cut that off and then not. We can get ahold of them and make sure they get those taken care of, Seth.
Yeah, they were like five feet tall, maybe three foot.
I saw those.
You saw them too, Jordan?
Yeah, but they're, they're still there. On, on that note, uh, they did have a complaint. Um, apparently someone took the liberty of dumping a large amount of kitchen waste, like, canned foods and milk jugs and, uh, I think there are even some larger items that were thrown in the cardboard dumpsters. Uh, please know, uh, since I'm.
Not garbage.
Sure. So many people are listening right now. Those really are just for cardboard. And this elementary school actually lost money. Because normally they use that as a fundraising source. And since the company had to separate out all of the garbage, they actually, uh, lost all the money for that particular pickup. And so that you, you are costing our children by doing such things.
Thank you. David?
I just need to, on half of, on behalf of the arts, uh, council, um, in a creative way to find opportunities for them to continue to bless our community. They will be doing a reader's theater online, um, the second week of December. It's looking like that will be, um, Thursday, Friday, that second week, which would be nine, 10. They will be performing, uh, Christmas carol and, uh, dish or, uh, application, I guess for, if you want to be a part of that, they will take almost everybody they can get unless they have over hundreds. But, uh, there will be a youth cast and an adult cast. So above, uh, eighteen and seventeen and below cast, um, for all parts. There will be short parts, big parts. Um, just a chance to set the, the tone. And I'm glad that they're looking for ways to bring something to the community in this time of public gathering hardship.
Oh, can I be Marley?
How, how are they going to be with, with the restrictions?
They won't be in the same place. It will be a Zoom presentation.
Oh, okay. Kind of like they did with.
Reader's Theater instead of being, instead of being in public, they will.
Yeah.
Just to zoom log on.
It's, it's like with, um, the cast of, no, I can't even think of the name of it. Not Jefferson, but whatever it is. They did that. Hamilton, they did that.
Yeah. Uh, this will just be a online performance that everybody can come and see or participate in. I applaud them for going the extra mile to finding a way to do something.
Thank you, David. And I just want to thank the council, uh, with your help with the mayor's message, uh, for December. That has been sent to the publisher, uh, this morning. And, uh, I appreciate you participating in that and, and, uh, listening to my crazy story. Brody, I don't have anything else. Do you have something?
Uh, I don't, um, well, actually, yeah, two things real quick. Uh, manager's report is you could go in and get a sneak peek of it. Um, there are a few minor additions I wanted to add. So I'll send out a link tomorrow. But if, if you, if you can't wait and you have to see it tonight, you, you can, you can follow the link and, and get there. But, um.
You can see if we peek, right?
What's that?
You can tell if we peek, right? It says last accessed by.
Yeah, I think so, but.
You probably said a lot for me.
Yeah, it, it's not like peeking, peeking at Christmas gifts. Uh, so, you know, you won't, you won't get a lump of coal the next year. Uh, so the other, the other thing, we did have something originally scheduled for the closed session. Uh, we no longer need to do that one. So, um, we'll have something for, uh, next Tuesday though.
Okay, all right. Okay. If we don't have anything for the closed session, uh, that's good because I was looking for a link and see. So Cassie, thank you. So Cassie, thank you for for not letting me mess up. Uh, not seeing any further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
The motion by Corinne, do I second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Stands unanimous. Okay, see you in a week.
Are we doing the work session?
Yeah, we have a, we have a work session.
We have
I was so happy for a second.
We will be canvassing, we'll be certifying the canvas of the election, and then we have a work session.
Yeah, we advertised a work session for tonight, Mayor.
Oh, yes, we do. Okay. Let's let's recess into that. Let's
Okay.
Uh, we won't adjourn the meeting, we'll just recess into that. We'll adjourn from that meeting.
Okay.
Are we gonna do a five minute break? Is that, would that be acceptable?
Yeah, would it, would it be like a five minute break?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, let's take a five minute break. It is now nine thirteen. How about nine eighteen?
I'll be back in nine seventeen. Okay.
All right. Will it be this link? Yes.
Yeah, we'll stay here.
I'll just stay here and pause.
You could sing a song, Dave, for the intermission.
Not tonight, I can't.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I do appreciate a good recess every now and then. I haven't got recess since I was in the school, so I think City Council, it's a nice change of pace.
As long as you wear your mask during recess, you're okay.
That's right.
My kids have been telling me over at Syracuse Elementary, I don't know if your kids are echoing the same, uh, Jordan, that they uh wear masks at recess mostly because it's been so cold.
I hadn't heard that.
They're just like, yeah, we're wearing masks, but not because we're told to. It's just because we're cold.
It's a, it's a little scarf for their face.
Mm-hmm. I think my uh daughter Olivia still is is uh in Brant's class.
I think so.
They've uh followed each other almost every year and uh, then we have soccer one year together and
Yes. We just need to go have them hang out, I guess.
I guess.
Well, you know, someday.
Well, I hear Brant's quite the ladies man.
Is he? That I have not heard.
I've heard he's very flirtatious.
Oh, dear. That's all I need.
Wonder where that comes from.
Yeah, falling far from the tree, is it?
I did hear he kissed a girl in kindergarten.
I think it was one of my neighbors.
It was. You live next to the Mots, right?
Yes.
Yep.
The rumor's true, huh?
Well, I heard it from Christie, so I'm only assuming it's true, and Brant didn't deny it.
Yeah, I think it was Abalina. I actually taught her in church, so.
Yep.
Are we all back?
Back?
Appears to be.
While we were gone, my nurse came and gave me my evening medication, so. That's good.
Hey, I I was just telling Seth that I I enjoy the fact that now that I'm on City Council, I actually get recess again.
Yeah, yeah, that's pretty good.
I haven't had that for twenty years, thirty years.
Thirty.
It's too, it's too cold to go out for recess, though.
Didn't stop me. I went out on a, I swung for like two minutes.
Okay, I can see Jordan, Seth, Lisa, Corinne, and Dave. Okay. Uh, let's, item number B. Our meeting is now called to order from, we're we're back from recess. Uh, the discuss the potential partnership of a private property owner regarding the village project concept approximately four thousand West and Antelope Drive. Noah, do you want to lead us through that one?
We forgot to ask if Noah was back.
Noah back? Steve, are you back?
I am here.
Can we move to say, can we do the fiscal year, the the budget opening?
Hey, Mayor?
Yes.
I think we've got, um, I think we've got the Boysons on the line, too, so.
Okay.
Um, uh, let me go see if I can track down Noah, so we don't have to, so they don't have to wait as long.
Hey, everyone.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you as well.
You probably didn't expect us to start doing all this stuff, did you?
No, we did not, but we're excited.
You asked for it.
We did. Well, if uh, nothing else to discuss, who was talking about kissing?
Not now.
I heard that, I heard, I heard that coming down the hall.
It was Seth, Seth was talking about kissing.
He was?
He was.
Uh, yeah.
I think that's why we've got such a problem with COVID between ages of fifteen and twenty-four. They're all out there kissing.
Well, I I think the kid that was subject of this was actually uh six at the time, so. That that's not in the age group, but still could be a potential issue. Hopefully masks are slowing this down.
Is there a lady there that can comment on kissing a man with a hairy face?
Yeah. Probably don't want to.
It looks like the Boysons can.
Kiss camera on City Council.
Uh, I want, I'd like to warn you that what you see here is uh forbidden to talk about out in the community.
You know, we're literally live right now.
It's recording, actually.
It is recording, and it will already broadcast on YouTube.
Welcome home, Noah.
Hey.
We're, we're at item B.
Hey. Gardener Village Concept. Uh, this has been an idea that that Better Cities introduced us to, and it's kind of gained some traction. Uh, sometimes the city gets opportunities for certain things. And we kind of roll with the punches sometimes. Uh, there, the stars have aligned a little bit. Uh, there's an opportunity for the city, but I wanted to get city councils uh test the temperature of interest and test the waters there to see what the appetite would be. Uh, let me share my screen. It's just in the packet, but so we've been talking with the Boysons and they own this property, these two properties over here. And they're, they have mini bowls and goats and all kinds of fun things, and they they're really interested in kind of creating uh a space, and maybe I'll, maybe the they can kind of talk about their plans if you wanted to, but but they bought this white house that has frontage on Antelope, and they're talking about, uh, you know, they've been in in our office talking about how to convert that home into a commercial business and maybe sell some ice cream and um, and so, so that's, that's them. They're awesome, and they're very, you know, open minded and want to make something happen on their property. They think it's good to for our residents to have a place to go, to see animals and learn about sustainable gardening and, you know, all those things. Um, and at the same time, um, simultaneously, UDOT is tearing down homes on Antelope uh for the expansion of Antelope Drive. So we've, we've talked with, you know, and I guess to talk about the Gardner Village idea that Better Cities talked about is the strategy of place making and bringing people to the community for shopping and creating kind of this unique on I fifteen boutique shopping experience as far as economic development goes. And so we have all all uh Gardner Village is 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 a collection of historic homes that were relocated, and then, of course, they already had a historic mill there that they converted to a restaurant and they've purchased other, you know, they've made a lot of improvements to the properties and made it really charming and awesome. Um, but it, it was all a private landowner, you know, that had a vision, and so we have this private landowner that has a vision. Um, but the city's role is what the question is of, you know, how much do we want to participate in in creating something? You know, they're already well on their way to create something awesome, but the opportunity that we have right now is to potentially relocate some of these homes that UDOT's gonna demolish. They've already demolished a few of them, but uh we have basically till January, they've, UDOT's told me that they would be willing to pitch in some of their demolition costs if we wanted to move some of them. So we've been doing some research. We've caught some uh, you know, there's a few different companies out there that that do that sort of thing. And there's a lot of variables when you're moving a a home, type of foundation it's on and the condition that it's in, or if it has additions onto it, the year it was built, what it's made out of, you know, so some some buildings are better for others to be relocated. And then another factor is if you go down Antelope, if you look, I never really noticed this, but there are power lines that crisscross all the way down. And so the height of the building can't be too tall um without either finding some sort of alternate route or relocating power lines or pushing them up. Anyway, long story short, uh, if the city wants to, we could kind of assist in relocating some of these structures to the Boysons' property. They've, they've talked about, uh, they've, they've talked about being open minded. There's still some questions that they have, they want to work out. We've kind of done some rough sketching. We think that we could uh easily accommodate a lot of homes on their site if we wanted to as a grand vision, but right now we're looking at one, two, three, maybe four homes that could be relocated. And each home uh is just for the relocation fees, about thirty to forty thousand dollars. But then you're gonna have site prep and foundation uh fees and they can move a home and place it next to where you want to go, but um the moving company will let you kind of borrow, they they place it on these special jack things, and they'll let you borrow it for a few months, but it's not like you can relocate it, you know, temporarily for one or two years. They want their jacks back within a month or so. And um, so that is a possibility, though. You could move, you can move it by yourself a month or two to build the foundation, and then they can move it from there. The short distance onto the new foundation, and that's only a couple extra thousand dollars. But it's not like you can move it and sit it on the jacks for a couple of years until we figure out what we're doing. And so.
Question with that? Can we ask her? Okay, because obviously if you're, it's not just pouring the foundation, but you also have to get like utilities in place and such when you're doing the foundation. And then, then there's also concern, my one concern is that some of these homes are brick, right? And how well did brick does, I mean, Mia's or Maya's was brick, and so it's possible. Do they move okay? I mean.
So the, the
Worried.
Um, probably the best candidate, or I guess the most charming and scenic home is is that that home where they had the photography studio and the CBD oil. Uh, that one has these really cool, charming arched windows, and that's brick. He, he was less worried about the brick, at least the one that we spoke to is less worried about the brick than he was about the height of that one. There's another small, like really small one that is kind of just a square than they they were. He was pretty optimistic about that one, but it didn't have quite as many charming things. And as far as the utilities, the way Gardner Village did it is and it's, it's really a building code thing. There's a lot of additional expenses. It's not just forty thousand dollars and you're done. Um, because there's plumbing, electrical
Right.
water lines, you know, all those things, gas lines, you know, you can't just so the way, the way uh Gardner Village did is they they abandoned all the plumbing. They, they abandoned all the water, you know, it's, it's literally just the house. And I don't know, you probably have to do a new HVAC system just for that space, but they really kind of gutted them out. If you go and look, and then they just ran new electrical to each one of the homes, so you wouldn't be trying to get plumbing and water lines incorporated into the foundation. You'd literally just, it'd be like a slab.
Okay.
And then you'd put it on the slab, and then you would run power to it. But so for, for, I guess, easy math, I think it's gonna be about a hundred thousand dollars per structure by the time. We don't know, but we, we have a a potential budget opening. You know, that that's coming up here. So now would be a chance if we do want, but the, it's hard to spend money when this isn't really on a park's master plan. Uh, it's, it's not, obviously not been budgeted or talked about in the past. You know, this is our time when we just turn to Steve and say, how do we pay for this? And then he says, well, we didn't budget for it. Uh, so it's just kind of an opportunity that came up. I wanted to at least run it by you. Um, you know, maybe there's, if if it's not feasible to move the homes, UDOT will be demolishing them. Uh, I guess there is, there are other possibilities as far as properties. You know, um, we talked about maybe acquiring some land out by the shoreline on the John Diamond piece. Uh, but the Boysons seem like they're really open minded and, but we would have to work out, I guess, ownership issues and uh timeline of what we would expect. Um, something to be up and running by and, you know, I'm assuming we'd be placing these structures on private property. Uh, this would be using public taxpayer money to put a private structure on a private property. So there's, you know, there's a lot of questions and specifics that haven't been worked out. This is very conceptual at this point, but it is a cool opportunity, and uh, if the city could create a a little village, or maybe if we started with a few, two, three, four homes just on the property that they've purchased, maybe it could expand out to, you know, ten, fifteen little boutique kind of businesses with the larger parking lot and all that, but but right now, the immediate task at hand is to save the homes, and if we want to save the homes, I don't think the Boysons have A hundred thousand dollars laying around to relocate a house, but they might be willing. To, if we could fund the relocation, they might be able, they, they might be willing to house it on their property. But then we'd have to work out some sort of. Agreement with them of what the timing or if there's ever future funds dedicated towards this. Um, but I guess it's also an opportunity for each one of you to kind of talk about and share your, what you envision when we say. Gardner Village, what does that mean for Syracuse? What do you think that means for taxpayer dollars and public involvement? So I think it's all up in the air and we, now's the chance we have to really envision and talk about what we think the, the place could be.
Um, so first off, let me say that I am not opposed to the idea at all. But I think that I have to bring up some of the questions that we have to answer. So don't let that be mistaken for lack of support because I'd love to see this work out. My first concern when I look at this property is. How you really get here? How, you know, how do people find it? Because the frontage is, it does front two different main streets. But is that significant enough property to, to build out something I, and I'm. I mean, I, I, it may be it absolutely is. I'm just looking at the size of the fields and unfamiliar with. Are we, are we talking about building like one long main street type thing or?
Uh, if, if you, if I can just talk through what we've.
Please.
Um, so you have this big open field. This is the sewer district. And.
Be nice if that was a part of this, wouldn't it?
It could be and luckily we know somebody. Dave has some connections.
So this is this week, I'd be willing to take it to the, to the table.
Well, that's the thing. We just don't know exactly the timing of when the sewer property would come into play. So this is the property they built and they. You know, the first phase is they wanna start. Making this into a cute little store with some ice cream and some stuff and they're gonna, they, they've submitted an application for rezon. And so if I, so I go out of the street view here and come back to the plan view. This property is really deep and if you look. Um, let me put this street view back down. So if you're coming up on the property. The, it's just this big open field. And as you come down, they, they wanna, they wanna pair up some of these trees. I can get it to go down. Uh, so as you're approaching the property, if you can imagine. A row of houses. Amidst, among these trees that are kind of paired up. So it's like a, a little, like you said, like a little main street or something. And then these pine trees would be removed. So you'd be able to see the white house and then there would be. You know, depending on how many we can save, as many as four. We also have the White Walker home that we keep talking about that. Could be a candidate here with Jerry Preston Project. So there could be a row there. Um, and there could be parking worked out with. See, they've already got this little driveway cut here. There could be just parking along here and then the homes could face east.
Okay.
And it could just be lined up and we think there could be. Four or five homes and then as, say it's popular. They could essentially create. A whole row all the way around a half circle. And they could put their animals in these uh, corrals in the middle. And create like pathways that go along these historic homes with flower gardens and things and. Then the parking could be expanded to kind of occupy a little bit more of the sewer district land and there'd be just like a long term lease that they'd. Have to do. Obviously the sewer district doesn't know anything about this yet, but. Uh.
I was gonna say, I'm pretty surprised that you're counting on them yet.
Yeah, that's it, but, but the immediate. Thing at hand would be to place it right on here. So, so phase number one, they do their little farm thing. And maybe we put some homes back here if, if we could figure out a way to afford it. Um, and then phase number two is you, oh, is you get those homes ready, you get businesses, you get a parking area right here. So that's phase number two. And then as you keep getting homes, you can line them up all the way down. So maybe. Three, four, five, you know, and we're talking. Ways down the, the road, but it could be something really charming. And if the, if there's some landscape architecture. And some thought into the pathways and the experience and the animals and, and that's really what their expert, expertise is, is in kind of. Understanding how to introduce people to interacting with the animals and the farming and they have a lot of really good ideas, but.
Okay, so to be clear, what you're suggesting is that the property your arrow is on right now. Would start with three or four homes? And see if it takes off from there. We're not talking about filling in the whole place right now. We're talking about. A phased approach. Is that what you're saying?
Yep, the, so if I go back to uh. So to this diagram, the number of homes that are available right now. Um, I think there were two or three. Available now and maybe if we get the walker home, that would be four tops.
So is that, that one next door to the CBD one, the other brick one on the other corner, that one with potential ones too? It's a Victorian brick. Like a mini Victorian.
Um, yeah. Yeah, here, let me show you which ones.
I mean, and the, the whole thing is. Great idea. It's just matter. What do we need to do?
Well, it would take an awful lot of effort for us to support this and. I'm not against it. Again, very much not against it. The question is, is where does the city?
Yeah.
You know, how does the city? Uh. Be accountable to the citizens that all the things we're putting in, we're getting. Something back for you besides just building a private business for somebody else.
Yes, there, there could be a public-private partnership for education or maybe, maybe.
I'm all for that, uh, but we, we just have to make sure there's a city side to it.
Yeah, maybe this is a park. I don't know. Preston.
Um, for you Doc, we submitted kind of an idea around the store. And then also ways that we, we are gonna give back anyway with our. With the store that we're doing already and how that can expand with a larger property. So we could send that over to you.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I didn't include that in the packet, but she did a really nice write-up of kind of how they imagine their. You know, what kind of benefit it'll have to the public. And that's what UDOT really has too. They, UDOT isn't. They can't. They can't relocate homes onto a private property either. It has to be participation with the city.
I think you go a little farther west. Noah.
I know exactly.
Yeah, right there.
And I love that house.
Talking about the yellow one, let's see.
There's that.
Oh, this, this one right here is a nice one, but that one.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, they're saving that one.
Okay.
That's one of our favorites.
Yeah, this is a cool one. Yeah, yeah, they're saving that. Uh, they're. It's down here. Well.
One, one thing about the more simpler houses though, even though they might not initially look appealing.
Right.
They could be fixed up. To look, um, more appealing and that they'd be easier to work with, with just a square. Layout, so.
Okay.
Well, and you're right about that. You, you've add some prep work and some, some corbels and things like that and you've got a. Victorian slash farm feel to it and, and you can do anything with them as long as your. Foundation is pretty simple and the skeleton's pretty strong. Easier for it, for you to fix them up.
Yeah, the, the architects and engineering work involved with kind of turning one of these houses into a store is a lot simpler with a, a square building. So we're currently, we've been working with an engineer on how we can vault the ceilings in that small white house to make it feel like more of a store.
Okay. That's cute.
Um, I realize we have to act fast, but.
What do we need to do tonight?
It would require a business plan that really shows us how the money's gonna come back and. And maybe all that happens and I haven't seen it yet. I, it's okay, but I think we need to review it in depth. But, but again, I, I'm fully supportive. I just, there's a lot of steps here that have to be taken. In my mind, to do, to do right by the public.
Uh, it would, it would take a, a budget amendment to, and I get what you're saying. That before a budget amendment happens, you, you need to.
Be convinced. Have an idea that this is gonna, how this plays out and where it ends up.
So tonight is mostly just discussing which homes and just floating more of the details on this and then we need to see if we wanna. Like next week, look at a business plan or something?
Mayor, if I could, if I could chime in on a couple.
Sure, go ahead.
Couple of things on this. So yeah, there's, you know, the, 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 the public policy issues surrounding this are gonna be. Um, you know, the, the city's involvement in a private venture. And uh, so we, we do that on occasion. There are, there are uh, reasons for the city to do that. Um, our RDAs are specifically designed for that. Um, this isn't in an RDA, so it's, so it's outside the RDA, but. Um, it is in, it is in line, there are specific sections of our draft economic development plan that includes. This exact type of product, so. Um, there are some, there are some reasons for the city to get involved. Um, I think what, what Dave's touching on too is. If you're gonna put money out, is that money gonna be at risk? And is the public going to be okay with it being at risk? Cause if the, if the venture doesn't pan out for what, for whatever reason, then you've spent the money on those houses being moved. And it's gone.
Right.
Um, and so, uh, there could be, you know, I think what we could do is. Depending on your level of comfort of the city's involvement. We could go back with the Boysons and try to, try to discuss and put together some options. Um, along those lines that, that kind of coincide with your level of comfort of, of us getting involved.
I bet you that, that the museum would like to be involved a little bit in this.
Mayor, is there already a, a group of council members working on this with the Boysons?
No, no, and I, that's the direction I think I was thinking. You're reading my.
Can I make a suggestion here?
Yes.
And, and just because of the connections. I don't know if Corinne has time, but because of her service with the museum, that might be one. But I'd like to be the other because of my connection with the sewer board, because if I could take to them a plan of how this might work. I have long felt like this particular property and next that joins these. If it is preserved as agriculture for all time, it's a detriment to our city. I've, I've brought that up with them before and kind of laid the groundwork for the fact that. Antelope is going to be a, a commerce center and. While I understand they, they have some reservations, I, I'd be willing to tackle that.
Okay, Corinne, how about you?
Um. It. You never know. Actually, okay, let's, let's try it. Let's try it. I'll let you know if things get too crazy.
No, I don't mean to push it on you if you don't have, if, you know, you could just be a advisor if that's what works better for you.
And we'll send over our plans because our main goal was to preserve it, to seem, to provide an experience. And mostly around farming. So even without this village. My husband and I, we're gonna grow flowers next year and do a cut flower farm. And we're gonna have, open up a petting zoo behind that shop. And try to create experiences. I wanna get involved with 4H and programs like that. So bringing the community together is our goal anyway.
I could clearly see a partnership so happening too with the museum because they get children's groups there a lot. And then if they had, you know, some, some places where they can see those. For instance, they, they have offers for donations for things and have nowhere to put them. So if this could add to your quaint. Um, you know, decorations of these homes or even permanent implements around, anyway.
Pioneer Village and Lagoon, that's just full of artifacts.
One thing I wanted to, to bring up was. When we do the CDA, I know we're thinking about doing a CDA uh, around the area of.
The interchange.
The interchange. Could that extend down this far and? That might be a source and, and have the RDA, have the CDA pay the RDA back. And that way it's, it's not as much of the public funds as it is the tax increment funds.
Yeah, we can look at that.
It's still public money, but yeah, I, I see what you're going with that. And maybe we do extend this all the way down.
Yeah, long-term that could be a, a source of funding. Well, I guess. For a period of about twenty years, it might be a good source of funding.
See, that way it also gives us a method to incentivize. Um, the boutiques and things like that to take up residence, cause th- this will be a risk upfront.
Right.
And I think we're gonna need some ability to incentivize if we're gonna, if this is gonna be a success.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Something that we can even change, you know, in, in the beginning stages, maybe it can be Dave and Corinne that work out some of the. The very basics and then maybe as we go along, we can switch up the, the. The people from the city that are working with them, cause it'll be a different set of interests in a year or two. It'll be different things that we're dealing with. So it won't have to be an eternal um, committee. But it might just be that everybody has a, an area of focus that they can work on, cause this is, this is a great. I love the idea for this and I, and I love the idea of bringing the kids into this and having it become a. A gateway to our Antelope Island and we've always talked about wanting to monetize the fact that we're the only gateway. And now this, this could really be like we've talked about an experiential thing, so.
It gives someone a reason to stop on the way to the island.
Yeah.
Well, even one of the, one of the great things that the, the museum is doing that I mentioned in that, that little report. Is that they, they join this website where people can stay for free in their parking lot and then they give them a tour of the museum. And, and they, for a donation to their museum and it's helping them fundraise quite a bit and they could probably do something similar here. I mean. It gets people from Antelope to stop and stay, spend money here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that was, that was the goal of the discussion. Do we, are we interested? And knowing that it's, okay, and then knowing that it's in the realm of four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, are we interested in trying to find a way in the budget? Sounds like. Not until we get some better business plans of how this one might work. I have a feeling that. Um, if we're, if the city's expecting, you know, a dollar for dollar return on investment here, it's, this, this isn't one of these. Those situations. Um, it's kind of like a park. It's like you do it because.
You know, I don't know if you're, if that's accurate, because I think there are other ways that it, it's, it is a long play, you know? But I think that over a long period of time, there is a way that it can pay back.
Yeah, if they, if they have boutique kind of businesses in there and those businesses are paying lease rates. Maybe, but for businesses, you know, they have capital expenses.
Sure.
You know, maybe, maybe the city's taking a cut of future sales or, you know, I, we want.
Hoping we can get a group discount on the moves.
Yeah, we might be able to be less than, than four hundred thousand, but. I guess my point is the immediate return on investment is not gonna be, it's gonna be about. Kind of in more of the ethos of doing what we do and creating spaces and parks and development.
It might be monetary is what you're saying.
I don't think so, at least from my view. I don't think so, at least from my view.
Well, but yeah, like as dollars flow through the community, they recycle six times or whatever it is. And so long term down the road, there's big dividends.
I'm willing to consider the long term sales tax impact if we create a successful environment as part of that return. You know, that's not necessarily a dollar to the city, but it's a dollar circulated in our city as Seth mentioned.
Yeah, at the, at the end of expanding it to. The whole property and you have a real village and it's bringing in, this whole thing becomes this parking lot that fills up. And there's this kind of round robin kind of courtyard and.
And I'm hoping the sewer district caves eventually and that whole thing becomes something.
I would love that. And I'm certainly willing to take that.
Well, we talked about, you know, if, if this became a pumpkin patch and it can go along with. The things that go on here, you know, a little mini pumpkin patch, not to, or maybe.
Does that.
Black Island.
Black Island farms.
Maybe it is Black Island Farms doing it in conjunction with the village or whatever. There's all kinds of fun. What?
Or if our flowers get big.
Flower, your flower idea is wonderful, cause I think there are so many kids and, and just women and, well, just families in general who'd love to see. And go pick their own flowers or go buy flowers from a field. I think that's a wonderful idea.
Pictures too.
Oh, if that whole thing was a field of flowers in front of this little row of historic homes, it'd be pretty cool.
No, I think it's pretty clear that the council has interest in this. Dave, I appreciate your, your, your willingness to step forward and Corinne. Uh, I'll be sensitive to your, to your touch. You know, if this gets overwhelming, would you both be willing to serve on a task force and let's get, at least get it going? Can we, can we do that? Okay.
One, one thing I can do is uh get some more accurate estimates from the moving company if that's what you want me to do.
Yeah, and what UDOT's gonna do as well.
Yeah, what you don't would give us for the, what they would have spent on demolition and push them. Say, this can be your, your, the best contribution you can make.
I can tell you what Randy told me. It's, it's cheaper to tear these houses down than move them.
But, you know, give us all of the movie or the demolition costs.
I think if we can get five grand per home, that might be a win. Just, that's my guess.
Okay. We probably do need to, I mean, you'd be surprised with those museum guys can do. So we should probably. Inform them right away too. November meeting because of COVID, because their age is sixty-five plus, most of them.
We have a, we have a meeting next week with Dean though, Corinne. We ought to, we ought to invite you to that.
Okay.
Brody, can we do that? Can we invite Corinne to that? Okay, I'm gonna move us along in our discussion. Let's, let's talk, let's have Steve talk to us about a budget opening.
Thanks, guys.
Hey, I'll try to make this as quick as I can. I know it's late. Let me share my screen here. So in your packet, um, you guys have seen this, this uh before, but. I'm gonna go over quickly the capital project. So this was the original twenty twenty-one budget for our capital project listing. Um, the next item here shows the carryovers, the changes are all in colored. So. All your red ones are your carryover projects from fiscal year twenty twenty. Um, these are the remainder costs, estimates for those projects. Uh, if you want me going into detail on each of those, I can. I'm not gonna unless you don't, unless you really want me to. Uh, the two green ones are added projects. Um. The twelve hundred south expansion was actually in our twenty twenty-two budget in our five year plan. This project over here is moving faster than we anticipated. Uh, if you remember, we did part of that twelve hundred south expansion. This would be, be the remainder out to forty-five hundred west. And then the twenty-seven hundred south storm drain outfall, that would be piping that uh, a ditch along twenty-seven hundred, I believe. Rob, Robert will correct me if I'm wrong. And then the other, only other change is we had that one line item for Founder's Park. I basically took that and broke it out with these five or six different line items. So you can see the detail there. As far as our capital. Capital plan. Some changes here. We did not get a grant for the ambulance load system, so we are taking that off the budget. These four projects here actually moved them down to a capital projects um budget instead of a capital equipment. That's these four here. And then we had some carryover. So the EOC is a carryover. And then these three items here in red for the ambulance, the police vehicle and the remaining uh cost for our watch guard implementation.
Steve, one, one uh, one footnote on the ambulance load system is. That's actually eligible for CARES Act money. So. Uh, we're actually gonna be able to save the, the match that we were gonna have to do if we did get the grant. So. Um, we can just pay a hundred percent of it um out of the CARES Act.
Um, the other, other things really quick here as I scroll down. We had uh some windstorm issues with the fire station. We got some insurance proceeds to fix that. We had the museum grant. That was a carryover from last fiscal year. Bulletproof vest is an added program. And the election expense for the park bond. As far as other, other funds, we had fifteen thousand for immigration trail carryover to, to crack so that trail. And then again, forty thousand for part of that, a portion of that playground in Founder's Park. Um, one thing we wanna put in is the park impact fund, just use twenty thousand for tables and trash cans at Founder's Park. Similar to what we did with the splash pad. Uh, if you remember, we did that with our park impact funds as well. Secondary, this is contributions by developers. This is basically going towards our tier three water that we just approved in our contract. Um, and then IT, we had a thirty-four hundred dollar ad for our switch annual support. There are some other minor adjustments in, in the budget opening. I'm not gonna go into detail unless you really want me to. And that's all I have on this.
Council, do you wanna discuss this? Jordan, will you start?
Uh, no huge items um with. I guess, when do we plan on completing the EOC upgrades? And I noticed that was still on there and I was just kinda curious about that.
Yeah, so we had, we had planned to do some visits of, of EOCs last. March. And uh, where we, I just talked to Aaron last week that, you know, it doesn't look like the, the pandemic's gonna let up. So let's just see if we can do it in a, you know, safe way where we can go. Uh, we wanna, before we pull the trigger on this, what I wanted to do is get. Um, some tours of EOCs that other communities feel, you know, they, that they have a good one. And we wanna go see the good ones and make sure we don't miss anything before we, we put money into ours. Uh, maybe they, you know, there's some features that we didn't think of. So she's lining that up. Um, and we're gonna try to do that in the next, in the next uh two weeks. And then um, we'll have our final ideas. We've already got estimates. Um, if, if we need to add anything. We'll come in and we'll, we'll get that specked out, but. To answer your question, I think, you know, I would imagine being able to go out to RFP after the first of the year, maybe. January, February timeframe uh with construction and probably mid to late spring.
Some things we haven't evaluated yet, uh, sales tax. Um, it's, it's been coming in higher than expected. I think we had eighteen percent in July and for September's distribution and. Around twelve percent in August for October's distribution. So. We're kind of waiting to see how that pans out. RC Willie did finally report their, their last partial month. So even with a twelve percent increase that does, that's. Not including RC Willie being uh gone, at least two thirds of it, so.
Shop Syracuse, shop Amazon, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, you know, the one thing I attributed to is a lot of people are working from home in Syracuse that used to, you know, would, would tell, work out. Or would work. Work up in the city. And so to me, I think that's people here staying in the city, working at home. And there's just that direct impact here. Um, so we're gonna wait to see, you know, February timeframe on a budget opening where we can evaluate some of those bigger revenue line items. And a more comprehensive budget opening.
Any other questions, counsel?
I'm good.
You good? You ready to call it a night? Since we were in a, a regularly scheduled business meeting, we do need a motion to adjourn. I heard Corinne and Seth, the first and the second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously, Cassie. Thank you. Good to be with you. Get better, get better, David.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night, everyone.
Brody, have you got a second?
Do I have a second? Yeah, I got a second.
All right, let me call you.
Okay. Hi, everybody.